We ready to go? Are you ready, Patrick? Okay. Okay, we'll do this. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our council meeting this evening, and I would like to call our meeting to order, and our roll call will be our Assistant City Clerk Claire Lopez.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Okay, I'm going to ask you all to rise, and before we have the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join me in a moment of silence to honor the victims of the senseless tragedy that occurred last Friday in Santa Fe, Texas. They are in our thoughts this evening. And then I also would like to ask Nick Pyra to bring down the scouts that can do the Okay, I'd ask Nick if he could bring down the scouts to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to remain standing, we're going to have our invocation by Reverend Frank Hallick from the United Methodist Church of Vista. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's take a moment and reflect. Oh Creator of all things, we come before you tonight and pause for a moment of reflection and calm. To be gathered together as a body of citizens who are concerned with the welfare of our community is both a challenge and a blessing. We ask for guidance as we consider the best courses of action and governance in the city of Vista. We are blessed to be in a community in which its leaders are committed not only to the general good for all, but continue to have a heart for the least, the last, and the lost among us. We celebrate as well the achievements of folks in our midst, and we are thankful that this body takes time to hear from organizations throughout the city and individuals, and invites dialogue with them and gives support to those groups, as with the scouts' presence with us tonight. All of these good works find their source in the hearts and spirits of both the leaders and members of this community, and ultimately, in your spirit, in whatever way it dwells within us. Your image for us at our best is as a family, as a gathered people, who dwell together with respect, decency, and grace. Grant that these ideals remain with us in this gathering, and at all times, we ask this in gratitude and hope. Amen.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And next will be the approval of the agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Amen. We had a closed session. Our City Attorney, Daryl Piper, will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session on the two items listed on today's closed-session agenda, CS 1 and CS 2. No action was taken that's required to be reported.
Okay, and the next thing on our agenda are our presentations, and we have three presentations this evening, and so I'd like to invite my fellow council members to join me at the podium for the first two presentations. And our final presentation, which will be a State of the Scouting Report, is going to be provided by Councilwoman Rigby and members of the Boy Scouts. So I will, we'll all go down there, and we'll do the first presentations. Okay, so first, we're going to have, invite Director of Public Works, Kuna. Okay, they told me how to pronounce this. Matusemi. Did I get it? Matusemi? Okay, got it. To join us at the podium to accept a proclamation declaring May 20th, 2018 to May 26, 2018, to be Public Works Week in the city of Vista. So let me come around here, Kuna. I'll read the proclamation here. It has a little print today, so I'm going to put my glasses on. Whereas the public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, the support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works practices such as sewer and storm drain maintenance, building facility maintenance, utility and park maintenance, tree trimming, graffiti abatement, street repair, fleet maintenance, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of our community greatly depends on these services, this year's American Public Works Association theme, "The Power of Public Works," represents a reminder of the numerous ways public works contribute to the quality of life of Vista residents. Whereas public works projects and services provide quality of life and social benefits and are one of the basic elements of our civilized society and our nation's economic growth and competitiveness, and the year 2018 marks the 58th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 20, 2018, to May 26, 2018, as Public Works Week in the city of Vista. So congratulations on that. And we... Okay, thank you, and we appreciate all that public works does for us, all the graffiti they remove, and they're always out there working on something on the streets, so we appreciate what you do. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. In our next presentation, we're going to be presenting Certificates of Appreciation for Youth Commissioners whose terms end on June 30. So when I call your name... Uh-oh, I have to have this.
This?
No, not this. So when I call your name, please come forward and receive your certificate and remain at the front of the room so we can take a group photo. So, this evening, the Certificates of Appreciation are being presented to students that serve as Youth Commissioners with their terms ending on June 30. And so Deputy Mayor Aguilar is going to help me hand out the certificates. And so first, we have our safety, our Community Safety Commission, and when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. We have Arlette Flores Aparicio... And Alexis Durham. Alexis here? Congratulations. Wait, say it. Arlette Flores Aparicio. Okay, very nice, very nice.
Congratulations.
Are you doing pictures? Pictures? Okay, so how do we do it? All of us together, pull up down here. Get in there, there. There we go. Oh, there we go, okay. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Alexis must not be here yet, so... Next is our Parks and Recreation Commission, Nicolina Villanueva. And I don't know, Emmanuel, I don't see Jonah, so come back here. Congratulations. Serving on our Public Arts Commission are Sophie Hansing and Jessie North. Jaden Diarmis and Luke Gonzalez. Congratulations. And our last two, Ashley Sanford and Sophie Schneibl. Congratulations. So congratulations to all of our youth commissioners that served this year. We appreciate all of them being on all of our different commissions, and so appreciate all of their service to our community. So thank you. And so then, we're going to move on next, and our final presentation is the State of the Scouting Report. It's going to be provided by Councilwoman Rigby.
I would like to call down to join me at the lectern Colin Carroll, Miles Harris, Jaden Anderson, and Nick Pyra. Good evening, Mayor Ritter, and my fellow city council members. On behalf of the Buenos Creek District of the San Diego Imperial Council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the activities of the Boy Scouts of America in the city of Vista in 2017. The Boy Scouts of America program is offered to the youth of our community through the Cub Scout Program for Boys in Kindergarten through 5th Grade, Boy Scouts for ages 11 through 17, and our co-ed, Sea Scouts, Explorers, and Venturing Programs for Boys and Girls ages 14 to 20. I'd like to now call up Cub Scout Colin Carroll of PAC 751, who will now report on Cub Scouting in Vista.
Last year, there were approximately 200 boys in Cub Scouts in 10 different PACs in Vista, with 30 Cubs earning the Arrow of Light aboard, the highest rank in Cub Scouts.
Thank you, Colin. I'd like to now call up Miles Harris from Group Troop 760, who's going to report on Boy Scouts in Vista.
About 250 boys were in Boy Scouts and Varsity Scouts, comprising 20 troops and Varsity Teams in Vista. 27 scouts earned the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in scouting, and more than 300 merit badges were earned. Nick Pyra will now report on Venturing.
Forty-two young men and women in eight crews were in Venturing in 2017 in Vista. Scouts and Ventures collected and donated more than 800 pounds of food across Vista in 2017. Thirteen different church and civic groups sponsored scouting units in San Marcos, including nine congregations, along with the Coanis, Optimists, Salvation Army, and Boys and Girls Club. I will now also be representing the Patani Chapter of the Ora of the Arrow. The Ora of the Arrow is the honor society in the Boy Scouts of America. Members are elected by their peers and must have earned the rank of First Class and have at least 15 nights of overnight camping in the previous two years. Scouts and Ventures in Vista perform more than 1,000 hours of community service benefiting schools, churches, government agencies, and civic groups throughout town. Scouts of all levels accumulated more than 400 nights of camping last year.
Scouting is undergoing many exciting changes in 2018. Beginning next month, families will have the option of forming all-girl dens in Cub Scout PACs, and in February of 2019, they will have the option of forming all-girl troops for the older girls as well. Again, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to present scouting in Vista, and I want to say thank you to our scouts for joining us tonight. Can we get a group shot? How do you want us? Put this behind us? Got to get our picture.
Okay, that brings us to our Consent Calendar. Items C1 through C10. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be acted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak current to the Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. So we have 10 items this evening. I'd like to just pull Item C10 for, to just, for a quick thank you to them. So anybody else want to pull? Councilmember Green?
I'd like to pull C5, please.
I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. I don't have anything.
So moved.
Okay, a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. The motion passes unanimously. That brings us to Item C5, which is bid rejection, traffic signal interconnect, and upgrade south of SR 78. And Councilmember, do you want to, would you like a report?
At this point, I don't think that I need a staff report. I had a lengthy conversation with our City Attorney and our City Manager. I just want to kind of bring it to the public's attention what C5 is. C5 is basically the, let's see here, get it right in front of me so I can get the exact verbiage for you guys here. C5 is a capital improvement project to the traffic signals and the interconnect and upgrade project consisting of the installation of fiber optic traffic signal interconnect system for 48 traffic signals, 16 closed-circuit TV monitoring devices, controllers, and related communication equipment. Bottom line is, this is a really big traffic signal improvement for south, for the area that's designated on our map in our consent calendar here. We have seven bids based off of an engineer's report that we received, which cost the city about $92,000. The good news is, is that the city was able to receive a grant for $865,000 for this actual project to upgrade our signal system. What I wanted to let the, let the citizens know is that this is no way being kicked down the road. Our city staff has assured me that we can send this back out for bid. We are rejecting these bids to save the citizens money, but we already have the money set aside, ready to go, and once we get the final bids, our staff, our financial department, will make, make a way to get this done as soon as possible. Relieving traffic congestion is a huge priority here in the council, which is, you know, why I pulled this, because I wanted to make sure you guys know we're actively working on it, we're aggressively working on it, and I just want to make sure that the staff knows I want this to come back at the very soonest possible moment so that we can get this approved, we can get these lights fixed, and then we can move on to the north end of Santa Fe, or the north side of town, you know, fixing those lights. So that's basically it. With that, I move that we approve this item.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, I just want to say, Joe, thanks for taking a minute to pull this so we could talk about it, and on behalf of all of us who are in traffic on the south side of SR 78 on a daily basis, we're really excited about this technology, which is going to allow our traffic engineering department to update the timing in our signals in real-time, manage and respond to traffic jams as they occur without having to send somebody out into the field. And we're also wiring our traffic signals so that when new technology comes along, all the signals can be smart and intelligent, talk to one another in ways that perhaps we haven't even yet imagined. So it's a very exciting project, and with that, I appreciate the staff's diligence in protecting the taxpayers' money, and we do hope in this action of rejecting these bids that we'll find a better price and still complete this work by the end of the year. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the rejection.
We have a motion, but you will second his motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And then C10 that I pulled out is the Women's Club Vista donation, and the Vista Women's Club made a donation to our fire department to purchase wildland hose packs and a gross decontaminant, decontamination kit for cancer prevention. So the fire department's going to use the funding to purchase wildland hose packs to carry hose while fighting wildland fires, and the new packs are designed to carry the hose in an ergonomic manner, and the design allows for rapid deployment of hose during a firefight. So I just thought that was kind of interesting, and I wanted to thank the Women's Club for their donation and thank the fire department, and so with that, I will make a motion to Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And with that, it takes us to our public hearings. We have four public hearings tonight, and the first public hearing is to receive testimony regarding a proposed general plan amendment and zone change affecting 19 parcels on the north side of Thibodeau Road. So our public hearing is now open, and our Community Development and Engineering Director, John Conley, is going to present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This is, as the mayor mentioned, a zone change in GPA, which was initiated by the council's discussion back in March. And we have a couple slides here to show the location. If you could forward that for me. There we go, thank you. These are 19 parcels are located on the north, north side of Thibodeau Road between Thibodeau Court and Watson Way. The general plan designation and zoning are for commercial uses right now. This was established in 1980 when the parcels were, excuse me, if you could please forward the slides for me. Parcels were zoned R1 when they were initially annexed into the city. They were moved into a specific plan in 1982 and zoned commercial. There were some minimum lot sizes established at that time to allow for the conversion of the residential parcels to commercial use. The specific plan was repealed in 2012 when we updated our general plan, and the zoning is now commercial. It's nonconforming with the residential uses that were there, and so the city council reviewed this issue back in March of this year and directed staff to bring forward a GPA and a zone change. The proposal would change a general plan designation from commercial services to medium-density residential, and would change the zoning from C1 to R1B. This would bring the zoning and the general plan into conformity with the existing residential uses that are on the property. Staffs reviewed this proposal with respect to the existing homes that are there and the zoning that's proposed. All the lots would meet the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, with the exception of one lot, which would be legal nonconforming. The action would bring both the GP and the zoning into conformance with the existing use of the site, and therefore, staff's recommending approval. And that completes my staff recommendation. If there's any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no speakers on this item, so Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for all their work on this. This was actually something that I initiated some months ago when I began to visit with the, actually before I began to visit with the residents, but I had an opportunity to get to know a lot of the folks that live on this stretch, particularly because of the marijuana dispensary that our deputy sheriffs shut down in 11 days, was it? I was using the number 19, but I've been corrected, and it was actually 11 days. We set a new record. And by the way, as a total aside, big congratulations to the Sheriff's Department and to the city and the city attorney, city prosecutor's office, for shutting down the last of the illegal dispensaries in the city. It might not last long, but for a while, we've got a reason for a short-term celebration. But I got to know a lot of the folks because of the dispensary there on a one-on-one basis, and I was already working on this idea. We've done some curb improvement there, and originally, when the developer acquired this parcel, they wanted to bring those homes into the light industrial use that is adjacent. But for whatever reason, they weren't able to acquire all these parcels, and so they were kind of abandoned as part of the light industrial plan. And what I have come to learn subsequently is that the folks who live in these homes have had trouble obtaining financing, and in some cases, haven't been able to refinance their homes because they're zoned commercial, and lenders won't lend on a commercial use to residential owners. So this just brings the zoning back into conformity with the current use and with what's frankly, the anticipated use for many decades to come. This is a row of really nice homes that have been in Vista for a very long time, and so we're doing something that's really benefiting the folks there, and I really appreciate the council's time to address it.
Would you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the item in order.
And close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Got it. Councilmember, Deputy, Deputy Mayor, did you want to say something?
I'm on the second.
Second, okay. So please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And the next one is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding a real property sale agreement regarding certain parcels located at 751 East Vista Way, and I have to abstain because my house abuts this property, and I think maybe somebody else needs to abstain also. Do we need to leave? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I need to recuse myself as well, as I own property in the area.
Daryl, do we need to leave the room? Yes, we do. Okay.
Okay, so I understand I'm momentarily in charge. I won't let it go to my head. So with that, we'll hear a report from Ally Zimmerman, our Assistant City Manager, and Amanda Lee, our Housing Program Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Franklin. Mizley will provide the staff report.
Hi, good evening. I was going to say, Mayor, good evening, council members. Tonight, this is a procedural item that is required by the state to dispose of commissioned property. The Community Development Commission currently owns property located at 751 East Vista Way, known as, commonly known as the Old Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park. The property is composed of two lots totaling 13.42 acres. In November 2015, the commission entered into a disposition and development agreement with Monarch to develop Parcel 1. A public hearing was conducted in November 2015 concerning Parcel 1. Parcel 2 is mostly zoned as open space and is not viable future affordable housing site. Therefore, the commission is recommending that the city purchase Parcel 2. As part of the disposition process, per California Health and Safety Code Section 33433, the city council is required to hold a public hearing and complete a summary report pertaining to Parcel 2. The purpose of the summary report is to estimate the fair market value of Parcel 2 at its highest and best use. Kaiser Marshton Associates, a third-party economic consultant, was hired to prepare the summary report and determine that the fair market value is $237,000. Staff recommends that the city council approve a real property sale agreement in the amount of $237,000. This concludes our presentation, and we are available for questions.
Are there any comments? Do we have any public speakers on the item?
Public speakers.
Okay. With that, thank you for the report. My understanding is we're effectively, the property's changing legal hands from one city agency into another city agency. Did I understand correctly, we're going to, the city is not going to be responsible for the maintenance of this parcel, or we will be?
Uh, councilmember, that's correct. There is a maintenance agreement between the city and the developer for how the property will be maintained, and it's laid out in that.
So this parcel won't have a specific use at this time, except to be set aside basically for conservation?
It will become part of a detention basin, so it won't have a specific active use, but it will be utilized to assist with removing portions of the city from the floodplain.
One thing I did think was really worthwhile to mention on this, before we move on, is that the detention basin we're building here enables the development of, I think, was it 11 additional parcels on Santa Fe? Without the owners having to build up a four-foot retaining wall, which will allow everything to be developed at grade. So this is a great piece of work from the city's development staff to enable the development and economic growth of one of the parts of the city that we're really working on investing in, so thanks for your good work on this.
Thank you.
I move that we close the public hearing and accept the staff's recommendation.
And that item was approved with the mayor and Councilman Aguilera abstaining.
Okay, we found a nice quiet place out there. The next thing on our agenda is public hearing number three. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding planning case P-16-310 Pheasant Hill Project. The public hearing is now open. Community development and engineering director, John Conley, will introduce the item.
Thank you, mayor and council. Our deputy director and city planner, Patty Chow, will provide the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, councilmembers. Patty Chow, city planner, deputy director of community development, pleased to be here this evening to present to you the Pheasant Hill Project. And what I would like to do on this first slide, before I actually dive into the details of the project, I'd like to just provide some background information pertaining to the project site. So going back to 2007, Pheasant Hill's specific plan was adopted by the city council on September 11th, 2007. At that time, the specific plan included the proposal for 15 single-family lots, homes, and one access point off of Lotto de Loma Drive. Many years passed without any kind of activity or development on the site, and fast forward to 2016, when the developer, the applicant for the project that's before you here tonight, came before the planning commission for an early design review meeting. So on April 5th, 2016, the applicant presented a project for 30 condominium units, duplexes, basically 15 separate buildings, and still one access point off of Lotto de Loma Drive. There were a lot of comments that were provided to the developer from the planning commissioners, as well as from residents, neighbors who attended that early design review meeting, which prompted the developer to make changes to their proposed design and the number of lots that are being proposed as part of the project. Subsequent to their summit over the project, and later on in June 2017, a neighborhood meeting was held here at Vista Civic Center. I had received quite a bit of phone calls from the neighbors and residents asking more information about the project, which then I requested the developer to hold this neighborhood meeting, so that we could address some of the concerns that were raised at that time. Several of the issues that were discussed during that meeting concerning density, traffic, accessibility to the site, impacts to the neighborhood, and also, a couple of the neighbors had concerns about access issues that they were actually obtaining through the subject project site, so that was also raised during that meeting. So the proposed project before you tonight is basically including a site development plan, a tentative subdivision map, and a specific plan amendment to amend the original Pheasant Hill specific plan. And also, part of the request is a request for street vacation of Rhoda Lane, which is a public road easement that's contained within the project site. Although it only extends partially within the project site, it is within it, so therefore, there is a request for vacation of this public road easement. The site's about 3.3 acres total. The proposal is for 24 single-family lots, homes, plus there are two non-residential lots. One is the HOA common area, and the other is the private Street A that's serving the proposed lots. The proposed density for the 24 single-family homes is at 7.16 dwelling units per acre, which is below what the general plan allows at 10 dwelling units per acre. The proposed lot sizes started a little over 3,000 square feet to about 7,300 square feet within that range. The total amount of parking spaces that are proposed are four spaces per home, so two covered, plus two guest parking spaces, plus 12 on-street spaces on the private Street A. The typical drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, all the associated infrastructure will be coming along with the project. And again, private Street A serves the project. There's also a small common open space area and private yard areas at each of the residential lots for the single-family homes. This is an aerial photo showing the existing surrounding land uses. To the north, to the west, and south, you have residential uses. To the east, across NCTD right-of-way, you have commercial uses along South Santa Fe. The site is zoned Pheasant Hill specific plan, and it is, again, designated in the general plan as medium-density at 10 dwelling units per acre. A 3D view of the project site, which I thought would be interesting, just a perspective in terms of Lotto de Loma at the bottom of the photo, NCTD right-of-way at the top, showing the project clearly on a hillside. And a couple of other pictures, just a different direction, the one on the left looking north, and the one on the right looking south, and I'd just like to point out that there is an 80-foot elevation differential from the south-westerly corner of the site to the northeastern end of the site, so quite a bit of drop from those two points. The site plan here shows Lot A, which is the HOA lot in orange. Lot B is private Street A in blue, and you have the several 24, the 24 single-family lots located along Street A. Highlighted in green is the HOA-maintained common seating area. On this particular slide, I just wanted to highlight the improvements that are being proposed on Guahomi Street and Lotto de Loma. So starting on the left, it's Guahomi Street, the secondary exit for the project, which is actually a right-in and a right-out only movement, and that's due to the proposed medium that you see highlighted in blue on that picture, that is actually in accordance with the Inland Rail Trail proposing improvements off of Guahomi. So PUC staff met with Sandag, traffic engineering staff, and the developer, and that particular medium that's part of the IRT proposing improvements is being, will be, part of the project, and that basically causes the right-in, right-out turning movement off of Guahomi as one exits, as a secondary exit for the project, or entrance, I should say, as well. The other pictures, the middle and to the right, it just basically shows that the project meets the line of sight requirements per Caltrans. So it's the stopping sight distance so that one can safely exit the project site. So the picture in the middle shows the Caltrans requirement of 150 feet requires stopping sight distance, and there is actually 200 feet that's available at that point. The picture on the right is Lotto de Loma, the entrance, the main entrance to the project, and again, the 150 feet stopping sight distance going north and south are actually both being met, and the one on the north is actually exceeded, there's 175 available there. The one thing that I wanted to note related to traffic, related to this project, is that a traffic study was prepared in April of 2017 for the project, and under that traffic impact analysis, the project would not create any direct significant impacts, so there are no traffic mitigation measures that are identified or required for the project. Several tables in the mitigated NACDAC identify that the addition of the traffic from the project will actually, to the existing conditions, and in particular, for studied intersections, that the level of services is actually at B or A, which is pretty good. As you all know, level service D is acceptable, so definitely A and B is actually pretty good in terms of what this project is doing to those studied intersections. Rhoda Lane street vacation is part of the request tonight. As I mentioned before, Rhoda Lane is a public road easement within the project, but it's only partially within the project, as it's called out on the tentative map. And prior to final map recordation, then this particular road, we need to be vacated because there is a private street and there is a public utility easement that's being proposed as part of this project. So the Rhoda Lane as a public road easement, there will be no need for it. It is not identified in the general plan in the circulation element, and it is currently a dirt road, so that's proposed to be vacated. An issue that was raised during project review, but it is not part of the city council's action tonight, has to do with prescriptive easement. So two neighbors expressed concerns during neighborhood meetings and past meetings that were held on this project, that the project design would actually impair their ability to have secondary access off of the rare portions of their properties. The properties are highlighted in blue on the picture to the right, and it would impair via what's called the prescriptive easement that they believe and they claim to possess. However, the easement is not found in any records or any county recorder's records, and it has not been recognized by any type of judgment issued by a California court. Therefore, state law, and neither the state law nor Vista Development Code authorized the city council to actually base its determination on this alleged prescriptive easement. Nonetheless, the developer, as a result of all the discussions and concerns that were raised by the neighbors, included as part of their private access and public sewer easement that's required from the city, they actually offered to widen that particular road that would be six feet required, it's now proposed at 12 feet, to allow for possible future access, if in fact, there was negotiations that were successful by the affected parties. The proposed easement is actually proposed to be gated at both ends, so that people are not parking in there inadvertently, and it would also allow for the public sewer easement for future sewer connection needs if there should be the needs or changes in the future in terms of the neighboring properties requiring sewer connection. So in terms of the general plan and development standards, as mentioned before, the general plan identifies this property as at 10 dwelling units per acre, which would allow a total of 34 dwelling units. The applicant is proposing 24 at 7.16 dwelling units per acre. In the specific plan document, the building height that's identified, it's a maximum of two stories or 30 feet. The homes are proposed at 26 feet in height. The setbacks are being met at 20 feet front yard, four feet on the side yards, and 15 feet on the rear yard. Total parking spaces, 48 covered, as mentioned before, 48 guest spaces, plus the 12 spaces on Street A. The landscaping is exceeded at 32 percent where 15 percent is required. The cross-sections here identifying on the top, the yellow cross-section identifying the houses that are existing off of Lotto de Loma, so you can see that the proposed homes are well below the elevations of the houses on Lotto de Loma. There's another cross-section down in the middle in red, which is cutting through the project, showing the proposed pads descending from Lotto de Loma towards NCTD right-of-way. The last cross-section at the bottom in blue cuts the side across in a north-south direction from Guahomi towards, basically cutting through the houses that are lined up along Street A. The points that I just wanted to make on this, on this particular slide, is that these proposed pads, they are located, again, below the elevation of the surrounding residences. They, it is an infill development project that's located on a hillside, and in fact, the project is acting as a transition or a buffer between the commercial uses that are located to the east, and between them and the houses or the residential land uses to the west. So the developer with the proposed grading plan is basically preserving the natural appearance or trying to preserve the landform, the existing landform on the site, by doing exactly what is shown on these cross-sections, which is the stepping of the proposed single-family home pads. Surrounding zoning, you have R1B to the west, which requires a minimum 6,000 square feet lot sizes. RM15 to the north, same 6,000 square feet minimum lot sizes, and you have downtown-specific plan to the east, which is a mixed-use zone at 40 dwelling units per acre. Again, the project is proposing approximately 3,000 square feet to 7,300 square feet lot sizes. This particular slide, I'm including it here as a result of some concern that was raised at the planning commission about the fact that one of the general plan policies goes is to help preserve and should preserve large, single-family lot development. But I wanted to stress through this particular slide, and I went around particularly the neighborhood, through GIS anyways, looking at the particular lots that are 6,000 square feet that are shown in red, and the lots that are around 7,000 square feet that are shown in orange. So as you can see, the site is surrounded by density, which is medium-density, medium-high density, and downtown-specific plan from a range from 10 dwelling units per acre to 40 dwelling units per acre. It is not surrounded by single-family large lot development, which is characterized by low-density to medium-low-density designations between one and five dwelling units per acre. In fact, nearby areas that are to the immediate north of the subject site have higher-density clustered multifamily housing development, and further to the west and the southwest, you have several small residential lots, mostly that are 6,000 square feet or even less, which is typical of the R1B zone. The landscape plan shows the 32 percent of the site that's being landscaped, which exceeds the 15 percent requirement, and non-native and native plant materials are part of the plant palette. In terms of the architecture, there are three styles. This one shows the Spanish Revival, astyle roofs, stucco-finished siding, stock pot shelves identified on these elevations. This one is the Cressman, that are concrete flat tile roofs with shingle siding, decorative wood shutters. And then the last architectural style being proposed is the Beach Cottage, with the concrete flat tile roofs, button-batten siding, and decorative front doors and shutters. There are a total of three floor plans. Each of the floor plans will have two elevations, and they start at three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, to four-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, and four-bedrooms, three-baths, all the way to the right of the slide here. Proposed color scheme includes four different types of color schemes to provide variety in terms of the, in addition to the different architectural styles. In terms of environmental review, a mitigated NACDAC was prepared for the project, and it was released for public review between March 30th and April 18th. The city received six comment letters, and they were all responded to and provided responses to the commenters. Again, early design review was held before planning commission on April 5th, 2016. The variety of topics listed on this slide were discussed, from density all the way to landscaping and amenities. And as a result of the comments received, it prompted, again, the developer to change their design and to reduce the amount of lots proposed. As far as general plan, development code, design guidelines, the project is consistent with those at a density of 7.16 dwelling units per acre, which is less than the 10, which is allowed by the general plan. And the proposed single-family project has been designed to respect the proportion, character of surrounding area, considering the existing landform on the site, as we all know, it's located on a hillside. The planning commission made a recommendation to approve the project with one added condition, that floor plan three to be limited to four bedrooms, because the first floor actually includes an optional five, and so they wanted to make sure that it got limited to four bedrooms. And that recommendation was on May 1st. With that, the recommendation is for the city council to approve the mitigated NACDAC, to adopt the specific plan amendment that would allow for the nine additional lots compared to the original specific plan, and to approve the site development plan and the tentative subdivision map, and last but not least, to approve a resolution vacating a public street known as Rhoda Lane. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
And Ms. Chow, does the developer wish to speak as well?
I believe they do have an organized presentation.
Do you want to introduce them, or I don't have their card up here?
Sure. Chris Darling and I believe Mark Brenzick are here from the developer's side.
Okay. We'd like to hear their presentation next.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Chris Darling. I've got Mark Brenzick with me this evening. He's a civil engineer. I've got Roger Basenger, also the architect for the project. Each one of us, Patsy made it kind of clear that if I could keep things moving along, that would be appreciated, so I've kind of condensed what we had at the planning commission to what I'm doing here tonight at city council presentation. Just want to reiterate, our group, you know, initially proposed a 30-lot subdivision, 15 duplexes. We did conduct an additional neighborhood meeting in March of 2016, prior to the early design review meeting. Different people showed up at the different meetings, and of course, as Patsy eloquently pointed out, many of the concerns were laid out, and we felt like we addressed many of the concerns. The original density was 8.95. We then changed the project to 25 lots, which was 4.76 dwelling units. When we met in June of 2017 with some of the neighborhood folks, two of the neighbors brought up an issue about this prescriptive easement. We made a conscientious effort to actually approach them and work out another solution where we would, through one of the other neighbor's yards, try to create a access. It was going to cost some money. We were willing to spend some money. One of the homeowners was on board. The other one just never really got back to us, and so we couldn't make any progress. We gave it a 30-day time limit, and then we decided to move forward. But my partners and I decided that we would lose a lot, and where we had a sewer access road, this could be a potential access road for periodic secondary access. These folks have primary access off of Lata de Loma. In addition, we work collaboratively with California Public Utilities Commission, with Sandag, with North County Transit District, to procure secondary access in and out of the project. That was a bit of a hurdle. When we got this done fairly early in the project, we realized if we couldn't get that done, we probably wouldn't have a project. And as Patsy also brought up, we abut the railroad tracks. Nobody loves to live next to a railroad track, but in Southern California, many folks do. But we realized that, and the commercial area to the directions kind of get me, it's either east or north of us, and the fact that they're going to be allowed apartment units up to 40 dwelling acres per acre, we earth that, kind of that hybrid in between the lower density and then the higher density to the north and east. Although Patsy also brought up, there's a number of other 5,000 and 6,000 square-foot lots in the general area around the project. I'd like to introduce Mark Brenzick to hit on some key topics, explaining, you know, some of the challenges we had from an engineering standpoint.
Hi, my name is Mark Brenzick. I'm with Landmark Consulting, the civil engineer for the project. I've been involved with this project for well over 10 years now. I was the original civil engineer for the 15-lot subdivision and specific plan that was on the project originally. And I've been actively with the project since that time, with various buyers looking at the property to see if they could make it work. And I'd say we went through three or four different buyers that looked at the property, and they all came back with the same conclusion that the infrastructure costs were too high for the number of units. And so if you're familiar with the site, we're pretty much, we can't change our edge conditions. So we have a certain grade that with meat on the railroad side, a certain grade with meat on all the surrounding sides. So basically, it's the same land development concept, whether it's 15 lots or 30 lots. Basically, you're going to have walls, kind of surrounding property, walls between lots to be able to support the flat areas for the roads and homes and the development. So the main difference, I think, between the 15-lot design and the current design is the connection to Guajome, and previous design did not have that. So the concept is now that the traffic more or less gets split between Guajome and Lata de Loma. So the people on Lata de Loma, which were primarily concerned about traffic, because the road is what it is, you can't change what Lata de Loma is, they're concerned about having more traffic on it. And so this design allows the traffic to be split, basically, between the two entrances to the project, and more or less will be feeling the same traffic volume that they would with the 15-lot design. The other thing I think is important to point out about this project is the, we're proposing a sidewalk through the subdivision. Right now, Lata de Loma has no sidewalk, so all the people in Lata de Loma, the only way they can get down to, say, the downtown area is to walk in the street. This will provide a pedestrian path through the site, basically directly to the downtown area, and basically improve pedestrian safety for the whole neighborhood. So that's kind of just a few big points I wanted to mention about the project. We'll be here if you have any questions.
You want to talk to Roger?
Yes. My last point of emphasis, I think Patsy did a great job with going over the architecture, and Roger's here to answer any questions regarding that, is this is entry-level housing, first-time home buyer, at least for a single-family detached, making, or folks that are going from a condominium to first-time, single-family. FHA/VA financing. We envision the project will probably be selling in the $500,000 range. Couldn't say exactly when, depending on when it gets to market, but it will fulfill a need where we've got tremendous pressure, we're hearing about in the newspapers every day, about affordable housing, at least, not affordable housing in the sense that subsidized housing, but for the first-time buyer, for young couples, for retirees, you know, people that want a little bit less to have to maintain. So we'd appreciate your support, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay, and so we have Councilmember Aguilera, do you want a question, or I have nine speakers too?
I'll just have a couple of questions, actually. I think he answered one of my questions, which was about, they'll be, both interested will be working at the same time, right? Lata de Loma and Guajome will...
Correct.
Okay. No gates?
No gates.
Okay. So there will be the possibility of cut-through traffic going through there?
Yes.
All right. But he did mention that there would be also a walkway going, I mean, it's actually better for the residents there.
Would provide a sidewalk for pedestrian access.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby, do you want to ask a question now, or you want to go to the speakers?
I'd like to hear the speakers.
Okay, we have nine speakers, so I'll start with the speakers. And before we do, I'll call three, actually, and one will be speaking, and the other two will line up over here, that would make it quicker for us. And I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting, and to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. We'll be respectful of you when you're talking, so we want you to be respectful of us when we're talking. Our ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disrupting our meeting. So applause was appropriate beginning of our thing, but it is not appropriate during this part of it. So we'll start with our speakers, and we will start with Judy Bailey-Savage, followed by Joel, it looks like, in Corvair, followed by Roger Basenger.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. I am one of the people that brought up the issue of the prescriptive easement, and Kenny, my neighbor, who has ADA issues, and his son, who actually lives in a wheelchair, did a little research, and we've been kind of looking into the subject together, because there is, occasionally, we need to get equipment down in that back area, because there's water runoff coming from the street, the City of Vista. I met with the engineers, we walked the property, that we're supposed to maintain. And it fills up with silt and things like that, so we can't hand-dig it with a shovel. Literally, it's as big, we had to dig it out, it was four feet deep of just dirt and stuff, with a backhoe. So we're supposed to maintain this, but then if they lock off our access that's been there since around 1933, Kenny found that there actually was an easement back in the 1930s, and we found the book and everything, and so we're going to do our research and try to bring up that, but it's, you know, a really old easement, so Ronda Lane's been there since like the 1930s, and we've been using that access for when we had construction back there. Kenny, who's disabled, that's his only way in a wheelchair currently, to get down from the top part of his property to the bottom part of his property where there's a garage. And so in a wheelchair, it's virtually impossible, but he drives up, you know, he can get out there and come up to his garage in the back of the property. So we feel like we do have a prescriptive easement, but we would be willing to work with the developer if they would give us access to the key of the road that's already going in. But he was telling Kenny, who's on a fixed income, and me, that we have to pay homeowners, or some kind of a homeowner's fee or something, to occasionally use that key for access to the bottom of our properties. So when the City of Vista owns it, it's been a public easement for years, and you can, if you look at that, if she put that back on the thing, you could clearly see how there's been a path, and it used to be where SDGNE or the local utility would come in, there's a 20-foot setback for telephone poles, and I think that's how that easement originally came about. They were, you know, for telephone poles and things like that, so it's been a utility easement for a really long time, just saying. So we're opposed of the project, obviously, unless we can have some kind of negotiation with the easement. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Joel in Corvai?
Corvai.
In Corvai, okay.
Legal counsel for the developer, and I'd like to defer speaking unless I needed to do so in rebuttal, if that's fine.
Okay, okay. And then followed by Roger Basenger, followed by Chris Darling.
Roger Basenger, architects, BP, architect for the project.
Oh, you too, okay. Is Chris also? Yeah. Okay, all three of them, okay. So then we'll go to Steve Wood, followed by Lisa Mowak, followed by Charles, it looks like, Treet? You're Steve?
Yeah, I'm Steve Wood.
Okay.
I'm a lifelong resident of San Diego County. I am a 30-plus-year resident of Vista, specifically Lata de Loma Street, and things were different back then, 30 years ago, when you could walk down Lata de Loma with your dog, or your kids, or now your grandkids, and have a reasonable expectation of not being plowed down by a speeding car, or somebody coming up from North County Ford to test-driving their cars up there, but now that's the reality. And as the engineer said, there are no, there's a few sidewalks on Lata de Loma there, but they're few and far between. Many spots on Lata de Loma, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street. There is no room to walk on either side of the street. I mean, you pick your poison, the left or the right side of the street, facing traffic or going against it. Sometimes it's better to have the traffic going, coming at you from your back, it's just because it's safer. There is no safe way to walk down Lata de Loma. I'd like to invite every one of you, if you'd like, come up, bring your dog and your tennis shoes, come up onto Lata de Loma Street, park at one end or the other, and walk the whole street, and then when you're done, see how safe you feel. I am opposed to the project, just because of the fact that, I don't want to wax melodramatic, but I say a little prayer every time my wife and my dog go out to go for a walk on Lata de Loma Street. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Mowak, followed by Charles, it looks like, Treet, followed by Rocco Veluzzi.
I have another handout, but I need to give it to the developer once I'm done speaking. So I apologize to Mr. Darling for not having an extra handout. My name is Lisa Moke. I live at 586 El Moroso, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband Barry Moke and myself. We live about a quarter mile from the project site, and we walk our dogs along Lata de Loma. And I've owned our home for about 27 years, and have seen how much Lata de Loma has improved, and I commend the property owners for investing a lot of time and money in their properties. To be honest, I'm sad the field is going, but I recognize that property owners have development rights. I just am hoping for the right development, and the right development as defined by your general plan. In front of you, I have a picture of the developer's proposed subdivision inserted in the middle of the surrounding lots. You'll see the, in yellow, the surrounding R1B zoning, and then the proposed subdivision, which is substantially smaller lots. To the north is multifamily, but to the west and the south is R1B lots. And I recognize that it's medium density in the general plan, but the surrounding lots, and if you go out further, the surrounding lots are at a very minimum of 6,000 square-foot Also, the staff report refers to the lot size range from 3,100 to 7,300, and that's a little deceiving, because the majority, or a good portion, or the average lot size is 4,000 square feet, or 4,200 square feet. So when this was approved in 2007, when the specific plan was approved in 2007, it went from a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet to now this, which is the potential of an average lot size of 4,000 square feet. On your second, on the second page, is from the city's general plan, and you'll see a diagram at the bottom. And at the bottom, to the left of the diagram, is what's considered good development or right development, and on the right side is what's not allowed. To me, this looks like what's not allowed, to be honest. Also, the policy states, "Specific plans shall not be used as a tool to modify or avoid zoning regulations that are consistent with surrounding development patterns."
I need you to wrap up. I'm sorry.
That's all right. The third page are recommended conditions. If you could look at those at your pleasure, it's three alternatives, going from a redesign at the top to the bottom, which are, at the very bottom under alternative three, would be those that you should add to your existing project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Please consider those.
Thank you. We will. We will consider those. Thank you. Charles, followed by Rocco Veluzzi, followed by Mark, it looks like, hold on. Brenzick?
Was that everybody? Okay.
You have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Charles Treet. I am a high school counselor. I live in Vista. I worked for Vista Unified School District. I have two daughters, so I'm just going to show you a picture of my daughters, so you see those beautiful girls that I'm raising, and I'm responsible for their well-being and who they become. Okay. I am the house that is 404 Lata de Loma, so that whole surrounding surrounds my house. They have not once approached me, and I have two daughters that I'm concerned about what's going to happen. There is now potential for 96 more vehicles to be on our street. My wife's a runner. She runs with our daughters. So as that guy stated earlier, that his wife walks their dog, my wife not only walks our dog, but runs our daughters, because she's a marathon runner, on our streets. We participate in the Vista Strawberry Festival, and we run. Our daughter runs in that as well. We are Vista people. We moved from South County San Diego, sold our house to move to Vista because it was an up-and-coming neighborhood for families, and now there's this project that's coming in next door. You're encouraging people to walk through this...
You're talking to...
Yes, sorry. To you? Sorry, I didn't know. You're encouraging people to walk down that easement down the middle, and then cross the train tracks, which is...
What are we losing? I counted, I walked the site today, and I counted at least nine native plants, species that we're going to be losing. Little sumacs, oaks, scrub oaks, everlasting, gold bush, daisies, and three I've never seen before that I've, I wrote down, I've kept their leaves, and I'm going to go look them up and see what they are. I heard on your, just wanted to say a couple things here on the native plants that are there. When the rail line was put in, we had, I called, and they were cutting down oak trees all along the path of the rail line. And I called, and they said they were mandated to put three oaks for every oak that they're cutting down. So I'm asking, is the developer going to put 36 oaks, new oaks, that they're going to plant, because they're going to be cutting down at least 12 native oak trees that are in healthy, good condition? Is there some of the leaves that you're never going to see again?
Are you talking?
Talking to you guys, sorry.
Us up here.
I was just showing these as public record. These are the leaves from the trees that are going to be cut down, that no one's ever going to see again. I wish that the Boy Scouts were still here, so they could go walk the site and see what California used to look like. That hillside is old California. I took pictures of it, I took maybe about 30. This is everlasting bush, beautiful white flowers that are there, that are all going to be cut down, mowed down. And I don't know what are going to be planted in their place. I just suggest no non-native plants be planted in the site. Absolutely none. I know there's a lot of non-natives there now, but we don't need any more non-natives. Have just all oak trees, all of these type of plants put back, native grasslands put back. I mean, that's all I'm asking for. No palm trees. I'd like to see ordinance passed that say no palm trees in that site. Not one. Not, not one. But, you know, I want to be realistic. I know we need the residential units. I just, I just want to, just want to speak for the plants and the animals that can. There's going to be a lot of squirrels that are going to be moved. Those squirrels are going to be going into the communities that are there now, they're going to go into the community's yards, and they're going to be making homes in their yards. You know, there's coyotes that live there, there's hawks that hunt there. I just want to speak for the animals and the plants that couldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mark, did you want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was part of the original presentation, but I just wanted to kind of talk about a couple of items that they brought up.
Okay, super.
But we've tried our best, we realized Lotta De Loma is Lotta De Loma. It's a dangerous road, it's got a lot of curves, probably was Old Grove Road at some time that someone decided to pave and put houses next to it. Has very limited right-of-way. The only way to put a sidewalk or widen roads is to condemn houses, and I don't think people want that either. So we realized the sensitivity about Lotta De Loma in this project, and we are proposing a sidewalk along our frontage of Lotta De Loma, which is basically all we could do. There is not enough right-of-way or room for going further either way on Lotta De Loma. We are providing the pedestrian pathway sidewalk through our project from that neighborhood down to the neighborhood, down to the downtown area, which I think is a big benefit for that neighborhood, just so they don't have to walk on Lotta De Loma, they have a quick way down to downtown. And we basically didn't propose any gates, because we're keeping it open, because we're trying to be good neighbors and help the traffic situation out there. We've been trying, basically what I'm trying to say is we were trying to be as sensitive as we could to, because of the fact that we are on Lotta De Loma. I don't know how much more sensitive we could be with this project. So that's really all I had.
Okay. So Chris Darling, the applicant, do you want to speak again, or do you want to wait a little bit and see if we have questions from the council? Chris is the applicant.
Chris Darling, once again. I think Patsy may touch on some of this, but as it relates to non-native grasslands, which we affect, we've got to buy off-site mitigation. That's something I'm working with planning staff on. There are some oaks, it's .09 acres, we have to buy twice as much off-site. We've got that identified where we'll be able to do that. So we'll be spending thousands of, tens of thousands of dollars to have off-site mitigation in permanent open space wildlife areas that will be kept up and through an endowment forever and ever. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that one last point.
Okay. The council might have questions for you later, so, okay. Okay, so I'll go back to the council, and Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Darling, before you sit down, your last, your last point was about the native plants, the shrubbery, please, if you don't mind, Mayor. Okay. And you commented that you are buying into an off-site-
Mitigation bank, yes, ma'am.
Right. So, so the community, the neighborhood, is not actually going to reap the benefit of that. They're still losing out, even though you're mitigating an off-site facility, correct?
At a higher ratio, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was my question for you. And I do want to say that I had a meeting with Mr. Darling, and had quite a few questions about the project and about the specific plan, the general plan, and he wasn't able to answer them all for me at that meeting, so he came back a second time and met with me, and we talked at great length, I think, in going over some of the questions that I had. And I appreciate that you did that very, very much. I am still not convinced that I'm not going to be supportive of changing this, the specific plan, doing a specific plan amendment on this. But I do appreciate the different types of housing that you're trying to put here, and although you did say that this is entry-level housing, four bedrooms, three bathrooms, is considered entry-level housing now at $500,000?
Well, we're proposing what the market is asking for. So essentially 1,755 square feet, I believe, to approximately 1,940 square feet. Two-story, once again, we've got to provide two parking spots in the driveway, two parking spots in the garage, so you have to have a certain-sized lot to accomplish that. It's, many factors go into it, as we went through some of the numbers in doing that. But we envision this in terms of it would be similar to the project that is up off of East Vista Way that Shay recently completed. That's the look and feel, nicer stuff, but smaller lots. I live in something like that myself, because I just want to minimize the yard work. And I think there's folks that are going to want to do that. But this is going to be FHA and VA, under $625,000.
Right, I remember you said that earlier. Thank you, I appreciate it. And I do hear what you're saying. I'm still not in favor of amending our specific plan. We did a specific plan on this for a reason, and I see no reason to change it at this point. But thank you for, I appreciate you coming back and talking to me again.
Okay, any other council members? Councilmember Green?
I just had a question about the specific plan. As you guys see, this, this lot right here, this little bitty lot is, you know, which is Pheasant Hill, is, basically has its own specific plan. And around this lot, all of the other areas are zoned for a much higher density than this particular lot. And I was wondering, 11 years ago, when we decided we needed a specific plan for this particular lot, what was the reasoning behind it? Was there a community? Was it our council? What was our council's reasoning? And I think only one of us was on the council back then, so maybe she can enlighten us too. That's kind of just a question I have for now.
The property was proposed as a specific plan in 2007, was it? When it initially was approved for develop, for the map, the prior map for 12 lots. It included a specific plan at that time to deal with some of the setback issues that could not be met in the zoning code under the R1B zone as a result of the slope of the property. The slopes required the homes to be placed closer to the street, they couldn't meet the setbacks in the R1 zone, and so a compromise was reached that they would process it as a specific plan to deal with the setbacks in that manner, but still pursue 6,000 square foot minimum lot sizes.
And has that changed at all, as far as the setback requirements go?
The setbacks have been modified in this specific plan too, to deal with that same issue.
Okay. The other question that I had was Mr. Charles Threet that showed up, he is an involved member of the community, I see him at lots of stuff for the school district, so he's a great teacher. Thanks for showing up and kind of talking. I looked where his lot was, right here at 404, and it was in your issue raised during review about the prescriptive easement. You can see his address right here in 404, and it is literally completely landlocked by the new development. So I'm a little surprised that he wasn't contacted at all with the outreach that was done, considering he's literally the first house on the right, right outside the development. So I did have a question about that. The other thing was, is the initial thing that was approved, which was 15 units, those were duplexes, right? Or was that something totally different that was put in front of us that was altered to this single-family residence?
They were single-family lots, 15.
Okay, we were also presented a, I mean, this is drummed down at this point, because it was, they were attached at some point, weren't they?
During the early design review, they were proposing 30 duplexes, so 15 buildings.
So as the city, we've kind of pushed back on them to get to this particular number?
Correct.
Okay, and they are going to add new sidewalks, which should help for Mrs. Threet's wife running. She should be able to hang a left instead of a right, and go down that hill into the community, which should be awesome. My concern is for the kids that are going to be living on that street in those three-bedroom and four-bedroom family homes, people flying down that hill, you know, with the sidewalks. Maybe there should be some type of, you know, like speed regulations, whether they're rumble strips or speed bumps or whatever. Having kids that are actively going to be playing in that community is a concern of mine with that cut-through. And there are a lot of people that do walk on those roads right now. I drive through those roads. I find the hills of Vista extremely peaceful, but you are absolutely correct, they are very dangerous to walk on. So I actually feel like this provides extra benefit for those that are, you know, walking dogs kind of an easy cut-through. And 24 single-family homes at about $500,000. To give you guys an idea, that's about $3,200 per month on a 3.5% down FHA purchase. Right now in the City of Vista, we're renting out one-bedroom apartments for about $2,000, and two-bedroom apartments for about $2,500, which I was shocked to learn. So $3,200, although it might sound like a high-priced tag of $500,000, that is basically where entry-level three-bedroom and four-bedroom homes are at these days, and there's not a whole lot of them in that wheelhouse. With that said, I am not completely opposed to this project. I do feel like it brings a lot to our city, having the two entrances to the project, knowing that all of the traffic intersections around there are rated as an A and a B is huge, because we have intersections in our city, as you know, that are rated as Es and Fs and need a lot of work. So I'd like to hear from the rest of my council members, but nice presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
Most of the surrounding lots were developed in which decade? How long ago?
A long time ago, yeah. It varies quite a bit, but there are a lot of, in the '70s, '80s, '60s, I mean, even prior to actually incorporation, so it's, it's a mixture.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my perspective on this, is there's been an entire lifetime that's passed. The land that was developable, that the infrastructure was cost-effective for owners to build on, they built on. This parcel has obviously remained unutilized because of some of the infrastructure challenges. And I just thought, maybe that might be something you'd want to touch on to help people understand, Mr. Darling, why this, you know, project makes sense. Do you want to briefly address some of the costs of the infrastructure, so that people understand the kind of, the reason that the density is required, is my understanding, is because of the fact that the infrastructure cost would be totally prohibitive for people to come in with much larger lot sizes.
I spent a little bit of time with Councilman Rigby, kind of going over that same question you're asking. Typically, I'm going to give you a little bit of a primer, I apologize if I lose you along the way, but typically builders look at things as a finished lot cost is what they're willing to buy, that'll translate to the house they can sell in a certain neighborhood. So we believe in this neighborhood, perhaps you can sell houses in the mid-500s. Saying that you could build a $550,000 house, usually they'll pay 37% of that as a finished lot cost. When you add the cost of the infrastructure, which I believe, I didn't bring that with me, but it's, depending on if it's 24 lots, or if it's 15, if it's 24 lots, it's approximately $120,000. That's just the infrastructure. It's about $170,000, $180,000 per lot, once you go to 15 lots. The fees are about the same, but you'd have larger lots, that's going to be skewed slightly up, because you have to pay additional money for school fees. It's, so it's about a $2,000 difference there. But once again, with the fees, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 or $40,000. We've got underground the poles out there, once again, if you extrapolate that cost, it's currently, I think it's around $490,000. You divide by 24, it's 20 a lot, if you divide by 15, it's 38 a lot. So the numbers keep getting bounced up and up. Before you know it, if you had, if you start out based at the price we're paying, you'd end up at a negative $800,000 loss if you had a 15-lot subdivision.
So if I built my house here in the '60s, I didn't have to buy off-site mitigation land to hold in a land bank, is that right?
Absolutely not.
And I didn't have to pay for stormwater mitigation?
Absolutely not.
And I didn't have to do a mitigated negative declaration and go through CEQA and-
I think this was in the county at the time, but your answer is-
I mean, I guess the point I'm trying to make, so that people understand why lot sizes are smaller, and why it's prohibitive to do, is because there are a lot of different changes that are being required by state law, most of it's not your city council here that's required this, and it's dramatically increased the cost of building a home in our state, and that affects the size of lots we can live on.
I mean, we have an enormous stormwater facility market, speak better to it, that we have to put basically between the railway property and where our wall is there, and the first, and the street, and that's just got to clean water as it comes through and allow it to drain out, because that's the new stormwater rules.
It's two 48-inch large diameter pipes that basically go the whole length of the wall that's adjacent to the railroad tracks. People don't pay extra for that if they buy a house, so.
And I didn't mean to belabor the point with technical details, but I did kind of want to make the point so that everybody gets the fact that the, the financial challenges facing this piece of land are very different today than the financial challenges that the surrounding property faced when it was developed in decades past. Thank you very much. So for that reason, I can fully wrap my mind around why this density is necessary in order to make this development work. We are trying to bring new families in, we're trying to bring, you know, we're trying to activate this part of our community. Specifically, we've invested many millions of dollars of taxpayers' funds into the Santa Fe Courtor, which is very close, and we're trying to activate and, you know, and alive in our community, and I think this is a good project to do that, so I'm supportive of it. I'm going to go ahead and offer the motion to close the public hearing once we've all had a chance to speak, and to adopt the resolutions proposed by staff and next in order.
Councilmember Green?
One more thing that kind of just caught my ear was that you're undergrounding power lines. It's been a little source of controversy here, as far as what we make builders do when they want to build. Undergrounding power lines is extremely expensive. I don't know how many of you guys have driven by Guy Blumberg. I know that that road's closed right now. Sorry, working on it, going to have a nice roundabout, good flow of traffic, but what I'm getting at is this is ugly. Those are big, ugly power lines over there with power lines drooping down. This money that you guys are going to be spending, especially the road improvements over there, roads junk too, by the way. Sorry, I'm looking at people in the area going, "Yeah." That's why we densify a little more, that's why we make amendments, is because that stuff is very expensive. And I guarantee the look of the community in that area over there, and the Guy Blumberg, Walthomey Park, you know, the city owns all the other property over there, which we're working on as well, once we're done-
We're trying to bring, you know, we're trying to activate this part of our community. Specifically, we've invested many millions of dollars of taxpayers' funds into the Santa Fe Court Road, which is very close, and we're trying to activate and, you know, and alive in our community, and I think this is a good project to do that, so I'm supportive of it. I'm going to go ahead and offer the motion to close the public hearing once we've all had a chance to, to speak and to adopt the resolutions proposed by staff and next in order.
Councilmember Green.
One more thing that kind of just caught my ear was that you're undergrounding power lines. It's been a little source of controversy here as far as what we make builders do when they want to build. Undergrounding power lines is extremely expensive. I don't know how many of you guys have driven by Guy Blumberg. I know that, that road's closed right now. Sorry, working on it, going to have a nice roundabout, good flow of traffic, but what I'm getting at is this is ugly. Those are big, ugly power lines over there with power lines drooping down. This money that you guys are going to be spending, especially the road improvements over there, road's junk too, by the way. Sorry, I'm looking at people in the area going, "Yeah." That's why we densify a little more. That's why we make amendments, is because that stuff is very expensive. And I guarantee the look of the community in that area over there, and the Guy Blumberg, Waomey Park, you know, the city owns all the other property over there, which we're working on as well, once we're done with everything, it's going to look amazing. And, you know, the fact that you guys are undergrounding those power lines, I don't know exactly what the dollar, extra dollar figure is, but I know it's necessary. The other thing is working with the prescriptive easement, although we're not a council, I'm not making a decision based off that. I appreciate the fact that you removed an actual property and left access there in the event that 1933 easement pops up and we're required. We don't got to bulldoze a house to give our residents access to their property. So you've made a lot of changes to this property. You've worked with us a lot. This isn't something that we've thrown up against a wall, wait for it to stick. We've made you jump through a lot of hoops, and it sounds like you're jumping through all of them as required. So thank you for that, and hopefully the city appreciates the work that we do with these developers, and although everybody might not be 100% happy, there are a lot of benefits to this project. It's not a huge impact on traffic, and it is, there are a lot of positives coming to the community from just a walkability standpoint out of that neighborhood, and also a visual impact of, you know, a really upgraded and up-and-coming community, which is why people were buying houses in that area. So thank you for the additional work on infrastructure and sidewalks and roads. Makes a huge difference to me driving through the neighborhood.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've seen this property go through all kinds of changes. I was on the planning commission when it originally came to us, and I do appreciate the changes you're making now, some of the accommodations for your neighbors, trying to be a good neighbor. I especially really hadn't, well, I hadn't really thought about the fact that the sidewalk was going to be a really good addition to Lata de Loma. I've lived here all my life, so I know what Lata de Loma is like, and I have walked it. My grandparents used to live right around the corner, so very familiar with the property. One of the things that I learned through planning commission and the years that I've spent here behind the dais is that there is actually a demand for these smaller properties too, not just convenience or affordability for the developer. There actually is a demand for smaller lots, as was mentioned, I think, by Mr. Darling. There's people out there that don't want to mow a lawn. There's people out there that, you know, want to live closer to town. This is going to be right in our area where we're developing, by Paseo Point or Paseo Santa Fe, excuse me. We're doing a lot, we're spending millions and millions of dollars on infrastructure down there to get people to our downtown. These are exactly the people that are going to be probably walking right to the downtown area. They can go visit the 508 Tavern or the Guadalupe Brewery that's opening up down the street too. But I think it's a great project, and I appreciate all the changes that staff, you know, suggested to the developer as well. There's been a lot, a lot of heartache going into this property over the years, going back to '07. So I see this as a plus overall for the community. I'll be supporting this project. So is there a motion?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it then.
Okay. I see no more speakers. Did this, does Chris, do you want to say anything further? Are you okay? You're good? Okay. Okay. Then with that, I guess I'll call for the motion. And I just say, I, I support it also. Everybody has said, I agree with what they've said out there, so. That motion passes with one no vote. So we will move on to the next public hearing, number four. This is a public hearing regarding film permit requirements and fees. The public hearing is now open, and our assistant manager, LA Zimmerman, is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. With me tonight is management analyst Shamira Harris, and she will be providing the staff
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city council, the city manager's office has developed film permit requirements accompanied by an ordinance and proposed films intended to facilitate commercial filming, videotaping...
Wait, hold on just a second. Let's give it a minute. Everybody, the room gets cleared, yeah, out, because they're talking. Hopefully they're out of here shortly. They're getting louder. It's a party in the lobby. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, just speak loud.
I'll just start over.
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay. The, the city manager's office has developed film permit requirements accompanied by an ordinance and proposed fees intended to facilitate commercial filming, videotaping, photographing, and other visual activities within the city of Vista. The purpose of the ordinance is to formalize the process for commercial filming within the city. Similar to the city's special event permit process, the goal is to ensure that commercial filming and photographing activities do not interfere with public peace, health, and safety. This ordinance applies to filming and photographing activities that occur on public property within the city limits. The city of Vista receives an average of three requests to film on public property each year. Prior to permitting commercial filming or photographing, a proposed plan must be submitted to the city manager's office. Similar to the city's special event permit process, this plan must include, but is not limited to, the anticipated schedule for production, a list of filming locations, the type of activities that may affect residential or city services, and the closure of streets if applicable. If there will be any impact to neighborhood or business district, a letter of notification must be distributed to all those affected by film or photography productions. The proposed film permit fees have been formulated by analyzing the impact to staff time and resources, as well as a comparison review of fees charged by other local cities. The base fee is reflective of the staff costs to process the permit and recovers those costs only. The additional fees are only applied when applicable, for example, if there's a need for a street closure. Staff recommends adopting the ordinance, adding Chapter 12.25 to the Vista Municipal Code establishing film permit requirements, and approving the proposed resolution to establish film permit fees for all motion picture, video, and still photography on public property. This completes my presentation. Ms. Zimmerman and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. We have two speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first? Okay. First speaker is Lou Slocum, followed by Cynthia Williams.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. I am against resolution number 2018, adopting film permit fees. Let me explain why. First of all, I am Lou Slocum. I live in the, I'm an owner of the Charlemont condo complex. I am a member of the Actors Union, SAG-AFTRA, that's the Screen Actors Guild, and the American Federation of Television and Radio Artists. Up until 2014, California, once the center of the universe for television and film production, was hemorrhaging feature film jobs to countries like Canada, Mexico, and Australia, and American TV shows were being shot in North Carolina, New Mexico, Louisiana, and Florida. The reason? It was simply cheaper to film elsewhere. California, as the fifth-largest economy in the world, was no longer price competitive. But dedicated industry activists supported California Assembly Bill 1839, and in 2014 it was signed into law. This bill provides $330 million in incentives and tax credits to productions filmed in California, and those parts of the state that lie outside the 30-mile radius of the studio zone in Los Angeles are eligible for an additional 5% bump in credits. And yes, Vista qualifies. Additionally, the city of San Diego and the port of San Diego do not charge film permitting or location fees for still photography or film productions that use public property. That includes streets, sidewalks, right-of-bays, parks, benches, beaches, piers, open spaces, skate parks, et cetera. How can they possibly justify this? Well, when you're working on a set, you get hungry, so the production company has to pay local craft services to feed the actors and crew. And if it's a multi-day shoot, those same people have to sleep, so rooms are booked at local hotels. And in between filming scenes, those folks may want to see the local sights, go shopping at the nearby stores, and enjoy meals and beverages at the many restaurants and craft breweries that we have to offer. These are all activities that generate revenue within the local community, and it's revenue that far exceeds that of film permits and location fees. Citing your own staff report, the city of Vista is averaging only $1,593 per year in film permit fees. That represents .0001% of the $127,850,618 that Vista collected in revenue in 2017. Why would you even want to charge permit fees when a production company returns so much more revenue to the community? The state of California is financially incentivizing its legendary film industry to not only stay here, but to thrive. San Diego was following the state's lead by making filming here as easy and streamlined as possible. I sincerely hope that Vista follows San Diego's smart decision to also eliminate permit and location fees and to set an example for the rest of North County. After all, you're giving up very little in order to get an awful lot back.
I need you to wrap up.
So please, please don't nickel and dime us. Please vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Williams, Director of Locals Administration at SAG-AFTRA, a union comprised of over 80,000 members in California and over 160,000 members nationwide. We are the largest entertainment union, representing actors, broadcasters, recording artists, singers, dancers, et cetera. I'm here today to oppose the new fee structure proposed by the Vista City Council. Our many local members depend on production jobs to survive. We fear this new fee structure will drive away production from Vista, taking with it critical jobs that keep our members gainfully employed. As Lou Slocum mentioned, for us, it's not just about our members, it's about the revenue that a production brings into a city. He talked about the hotel stays and the restaurants and catering, security, transportation, and I believe this revenue outweighs the cost of permits. Thank you for considering our opposition.
Thank you. So you go back to the council. That's the end of our speakers, and so I will go to Councilmember Franklin.
You know, one question that I had, if I'm a family photographer and I want to take some pictures, I'm a professional family photographer, I want to take some family pictures, I'm being paid to do it at Bringle Terrace Park. It's going to take 30 minutes to do. I'm not obstructing the park or stopping anybody else from using the park. I'm not creating a public safety hazard or closing a public street or a public sidewalk. Do I need a permit under this proposal?
No, you wouldn't need a permit.
Okay. So that doesn't, the still photography, less than 10 cast and crews, that...
So that would not be for commercial use? So if it's for a commercial use...
Okay, so the product has to be sold in commercial use?
Yes, yes.
Not just, not just a photographer hired for it commercially?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And so the compelling reason to do this is more about recovering the cost, or it's more about making sure that people are applying for the permit so that we can plan accordingly?
More about recovering costs.
And what again is the expected revenue?
So it wouldn't, it typically does not exceed more than $1,500 per year. We, on average, we get about three requests per year.
And I would clarify, the resolution establishing fees is about recovering the staff costs, but identifying the, the ordinance that would implement a program that would establish health and safety regulations and ensure that streets can't, streets or sidewalks couldn't just be blocked off with no authority, that's, that's what we're trying to establish as well.
Isn't there already a street closure permit that would be required if you want to close a street?
So the film permit could morph into a special event permit if it became so large that it might qualify for that. But a special event permit doesn't necessarily require a filming component. It could be just for a block party or the use of a, of a public facility. So there may be some overlap, but we would work in concert with Special Event Committee on that.
Do we think there's a lot of people filming right now that aren't pulling a permit when they're supposed to be, or...
I wouldn't say a lot, but I would say there are some. We've seen some beautiful footage of the city of Vista that we know people haven't come in and gotten permits for, and we only know of those who, who proactively reach out to us unless we get a complaint from the public or a business member about filming going on and potentially impacting. We've had that a couple of times in my tenure with the city where all of a sudden there's a giant couch on a sidewalk and people filming for, you know, maybe a low-budget reality something, but other than that, we only know about what we hear about.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just jump in here real quick, is that kind of along the same line, what about like a realtor, a commercial realtor that takes pictures of the city hall and things for, it's a, for commercial advertising for their real estate? Would they have to then get a permit to do that?
I would have to check. I'm, I'm not certain. If they're using that for commercial advertising purposes, it may fall under the ordinance.
Hmm, okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have 3.2 applications, according to staff report, per year. That's not, not a lot. How do companies know that they have to file an application? Is it just their production company goes onto our website and sees, oh, there's an application, we should fill it out, or is there some contact? How does that work?
So typically, excuse me, typically what would happen is a more experienced or seasoned production company, and often students who are working with a college film department know to go and check with the local jurisdiction to find out what requirements there are, there may be. We do also have it advertised on our website, and it's available if, to download the current application if you need it. But generally speaking, if it's, if it's somebody who is in the commercial industry, they recognize that local jurisdictions have, all have different roles, and they usually inquire.
Okay. So with three applications per year, I'm not seeing an urgent need to run right out and regulate the film industry in our city? Was there a particular incident that precipitated this?
In order to, we don't have a formal process right now, and by establishing an ordinance and fees by resolution, we formalize the process that has been an internal administrative staff process to date. And I would also like to clarify that the, the staff report indicates, yes, we do have an average of 3.2 permits that are processed each year, but we get probably three times as many inquiries, and then they either don't follow up or they move on elsewhere. Unless we were to go drive around looking for them, we wouldn't know if they were there. But there are more inquiries than there are actually permits pulled, and I think that's typical when people are scouting for locations. They'll call around and try and find the right place. Also, if you're doing your filming in, on private property, that's not something that would require a film permit. So there could be much more filming going on, just not on the right-of-way or public property.
So for the people who you know are out there filming without a permit, and you, you said sometimes we get a call from the public complaining, how many calls have we gotten from the public complaining about something going on?
Not many.
Not many?
Mm-mm.
I ask these questions because my first thought is, as somebody who really doesn't like government getting in the way of business, I'm thinking there's, I don't see a need to do this, first of all. I, I would like to see the filming industry want to come to Vista, and if we put barriers out there, they're probably not going to, or they're not going to be interactive with the, with the city. And I'm sitting here in my Boy Scout uniform, because we had the presentation with the Scouts earlier, and I am reminded that for 10 years, I was a summer camp director for, for Scouts and responsible for the welfare of 150 kids and then adult scouters in Carlsbad, and we would traverse from our base camp down the road to the pool, and we had kids all over the place. And the only requirement put out to me with that enormous amount of people in one place and then moving through the city streets at one time was that I just had to notify them and let them know I was there. I wrote them a letter. I told them, these are the dates that we're going to be in your community, this is what we're going to be doing. If anybody complains or anybody has any problem, or we, let us know, and if we have a problem, I need you to know that I've got 200 people in this location that will need help. And I'm wondering if that is not someplace that we can start, because if we have three per year on average, the highest we had in 2015 was seven, and we're looking at a staff time... time of 1,500 per year, $1,500, I think you said was the cost recovery, $1,500, I'm just thinking if, if we just initially require them, send us what you're doing, let us know that you're here, and then if we need to keep an eye on this, we can, if community complains, if the public complains, we know where you are, or if you need help or something happens, if there's, you know, God forbid, another emergency in our community, we know where your 120 cast and crew members are that might need help or evacuation. So I really think, I'm not going to be supportive of instituting this, I think that there might be other ways that we can, we can monitor filming in our community and welcome filming in our community. I think if we want to bring things into our community, this is one of the things that we'd like to do. Granted, they want to do nice filming in our community and showcase our community. And then the way that it's, so my first thing is, I'm not in favor of doing this at all. I think there's another way that we can approach this idea, but and then looking at the type of fees, I think the comment that Mr. Sloka made about nickel and diming is the same thing I commented to the city manager about. When you look at this, it's just the city, the government bureaucracy, once again, coming in for, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different levels of permitting, and I think that's a bit excessive. So if, if, there's got to be a different way that we can do this. So I would say no to this completely at this point. I would say yes to requiring an application that we would say, just show us who you are, what you're doing, where you're doing it, when you're doing it, how many you're going to be doing it with, and then if we have to go to the next level for permitting on particular days, then we can perhaps consolidate some of these so that we're not having eight different categories out there. So that's what I would like to look at. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I guess my question is, what happens when they don't notify us? So that's my concern. My understanding is that we are charging some fees at this point in time, but we don't really have an ordinance set up. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it's just been a longstanding staff practice that the permit for the film, there's a fee permit established, and then when we went and did the research, we realized we don't have any authorizing documentation that allows that.
All this is doing is formalizing. We're not, are we adding new fees?
No, they're the same. They haven't changed.
They're the same?
Yes.
So it is formalizing our current process, and the fee resolution is separate from the ordinance that would basically formalize our current application process. And when people do call in, if, they'll call in and tell us what they're doing, and if it's not something that would fall under a permit, we tell them that and thank them for, for contacting the city. But similar to how we established the special event permit process, this is for, really for activities that impact the public right-of-way.
So I'm all for formalizing because it keeps us out of trouble, I think. My question, or my concern with this right now is just how do we compare, I guess, to other cities and that? I see a cost of $87 for a management analyst, I guess that's the average. I mean, that doesn't seem like it's too much for a professional organization, but I'm looking at the cost of $500 per day for filming fee for more than 10 cast and crew members full day. How does that compare to, say, Carlsbad, Oceanside, or our surrounding communities?
So, so for the city of Carlsbad, they do not have an actual film ordinance, however, when you do want to film, there are fees that they impose and it's under their business license, so when they, even when there's filming on private property, the fee is $30 a day, and then 10 days every day after that, then $100 for the first day, and $50 after that when public property is used.
And also, this is actually attached as Exhibit 4 to your agenda report, a summary, Carlsbad may require one of their special use permits, again, if it is impacting public streets or public sidewalks, and if you're in a park, you may need a facility use permit. Again, that's similar to our rental permits that you would establish for anyone renting one of our facilities or parks. The five North County cities are identified on Exhibit 4, San Marcos and Carlsbad not having a formal film ordinance, and Escondido and Oceanside having film permit ordinances. Oceanside, Oceanside has a, both of those two that have the established permits are the same or higher than Vista's would be.
Okay, so it's really hard to compare these, that's what I'm trying to do.
They're all across the board, which is why we did it as a summary, so you could see what it was, but...
That's what I figured out. Is it more expensive to film in Vista, or is it more expensive to film in Escondido?
It's the same for the base fee of $50 for Escondido and Vista. Carlsbad, it really depends on where you are. If you are requiring, you're going to have to get the business license. If you're there for a number of days, you may have fees on top of that. Ours is not established exactly the same way. It really depends on what you're applying for, how the permits would, but they're all somewhat in line, those that actually have established a film permit.
Okay. So the requests that we've had in the past, going, dating back to 2013, I mean, they're somewhere between $300 and $400, is that just, that's the cost of the total fee? Right?
Correct.
Do we know how many days?
We could pull the applications if you wanted more detail, but typically those fees exist based on rush processing a lot of times, and then the, the number of days and the size of the crew.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
So if I want to close the street for any purpose, commercial, I need a permit?
Correct.
Is this just a cheaper permit that allows you to close the street?
It would depend, because if you're closing the street for a block party, if you're requiring, if a traffic control plan is required, there may be some fees there. There is no established special event permit fee, but there are fees related to what you are going to do with that special event.
Here's what I can't get my mind around. The only time I ever want to make anybody get a permit is when they are depriving other citizens of the use of public property, but until they're doing that, I mean, if somebody wanted to come, you know, film a quick segment for a restaurant or something, if they're not stopping other people from using the sidewalk, or stopping other people from using the road, in which case there should already be existing permits for sidewalk closure or street closure, right? So...
Exactly.
Are they just much more expensive? Is this giving a break to film, production companies, by allowing a different type of street closure permit?
The street closure permit comes through the special event permit process, and again, it depends on how long you're going to have the street closed, the length of the segment, how many intersections may need to be monitored. If you're talking about somebody doing a quick filming project and they're not impacting the right-of-way, then a permit isn't required, but if they would like to take over a sidewalk, if they're going to be impacting accessible movement, if, if they're going to close a street, if they need to have multiple vehicles in a certain area, then we'd like to know about that, and we'd like to be able to establish a permit to make sure that the health and safety are secure.
But if I, so if I, if I close the sidewalk for any other purpose except for a film, I need a street, I need a sidewalk closure permit?
Yeah, I believe it's the special event permit.
Special event permit.
Correct.
But then if there's a camera involved, then I need this permit instead of that permit?
Is it for a commercial purpose? Are you using the city's property for your commercial purpose? The public property for commercial purpose, then yes, this permit would be required. If it's for...
Not in addition to, though, right?
This would be the permit?
Yeah. I just, I guess I just, I'm failing to understand why if there's already a permit for encroaching on the public right-of-way, I mean...
If the council desires, we could just require that anyone requesting to film go through the special event permit process.
Well, I don't want to make anybody that's, I'm just saying, if they, if they're filming something, but they're not impeding other people's ability to use, I don't know, is that the point, is that they always are? They're always impeding the ability of other people to use the public resources, that they're...
If the description of the use and the request for the filming or the photographing would do that, then the permit would come into place. So yes, this permit is for when you are always impeding.
There's cost recovery too, right?
If needed.
Are you, are you all...
I'm extraordinarily ambivalent.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
So I've heard you a couple of times, and how I was told as well is, this is a health and safety concern, and we need to make sure that our health and safety are secure, therefore that's why we're putting these, you know, permits and making it all official and stuff, yet it doesn't sound like anybody's health and safety has been jeopardized by not having these fees, and we haven't had like a whole bunch of calls, like, hey, they're filming without a permit, and they shut down the road, and, like, to the best of my knowledge, like, I just don't know why we need to create additional fees and permits. Like, I'm all for being proactive when it comes to, hey, there's a problem we see coming down the road, let's put it, but 16 permit requests over the last five years doesn't seem like a huge, I mean, you know, even the fact that we're talking about it at a council meeting tonight, to me, kind of seems like a waste of time, to be completely honest, with the amount of, I mean, there's a lot of days over those five years, 16 of them were only affected by this, so, you know, for me, I don't know how this helps anybody except for the city make more money off of, you know, people who are coming here to film, which in turn, if they seriously bring in revenue to our businesses, I would think this would just be a way to detour people from filming in our city, not. And I think one more question that I had is, are these permit fees in addition to the street closure fees or in lieu of the street closure fees? So like, if they say, hey, we're having a block party, we're closing down the street and we're filming, do they have to pay the permit fees for the street closure, special use block party, and then additionally 500 more for the whole day of filming on that street? Or does the $500 filming, is that cheaper than paying the block shutdown fee? Or is this just a fee on top of another fee now?
So my understanding of the special event permit fees is you, that is, you go before committee and identify what you're doing. The Strawberry Festival is a much larger example of how that would work. A, I'm trying to, I can't even think of a smaller example right now, but the Strawberry Festival, you have coordinated efforts between North County Transit District, the Sheriff's Department, the city risk management, traffic impacts, trying to determine what are all the impacts and how they'd be addressed. The fees would be required based on that conversation and that, and going through that permit process, which exists. And so I can't say specifically if it would be more or less, but if you wanted to shut down an entire street for a day, and it wasn't maybe a block party where it was just in a cul-de-sac or something, but you're blocking egress, you're requiring detour signs, you're requiring the blocker, the blockades, and potentially sheriff's staff or volunteers there to, to help to, people to get around, there will be fees attached. Right now, if you also, if you were doing that for the purpose of commercial filming on top of it, and I wanted to clarify, the city's not trying to make money, but with every permit we have in place, we establish a cost recovery based on staff time to do it, and that's all we're simply trying to do is formalize that, that cost recovery. We're obviously not making money off of film permits at $50 a pop. That being said, it, each situation is so uniquely different that it's difficult to say which one costs more. It really depends on the unique situation that's presented.
Yeah, and as opposed to cost, like I say, the thing that kind of hit home with me was, this is a health and safety concern, and I just don't see it being a health and safety concern, it seems more like a recouping of cost concern as opposed to a health and safety, unless I'm wrong, due to, you know, the events and the impact these events have had, I haven't seen any impact of any filming events.
I might clarify too, with the special event permit, that's typically a process where we know weeks in advance, months in advance, that something large is coming up, and we pull a number of resources together to be able to deal with an event. With a film permit, it might be getting a call on a Monday that somebody wants to film on a Wednesday or a Thursday, so the special event permit process, unfortunately for our needs with all the different agencies that are involved, is not something that can be just done in, in a day or two. The other issue is, you brought up health and safety, or you said that was one of the things that was brought up to you, and I will say, for the film permit process, the review is just to review what the impact could be on the community. That could be a business that's impacted during the lunch hour because somebody's setting up a couch, as Ms. Zimmerman described, in front of one of our downtown businesses, and basically said, nobody can walk in front or behind because we're filming, and that impacted the lunch hour of that business. Surely, all of you are going to hear about that. And so what we're trying to do is be able to analyze things to see if there is an impact on traffic, if there is an impact on the city, the residents, noise, whatever that might be, to take that into account, to protect all those, those areas.
Our attorney wants to step in here, so Attorney Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a legal point, but I used to live in a city that experienced health and safety issues from filming. They did not have permits originally, they ultimately did, and their principal impact was from large studio trucks being parked on residential streets, thereby blocking half of the street, and they'd be there for a day, maybe a week. A lot of this filming was television-related, and you had generators running, the turbines running on the power supplies for the lighting, and that is what led them to do this. I'm not aware that we've had any type of filming like that here, but you asked for an example of health and safety, and that's the one that comes to mind.
I have a question, and this is just to memorialize what we're already doing, we're already doing this, right? And then this is just to put a, something in process that's, it's written down rather than just free-for-all whenever they call in, but we still already do it, and the fees are already charged?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd say, okay, back to...
Yeah, and that was my question, is these fees that we're charging per se, we're just verifying, we haven't had tons of complaints from the film industry that's been paying them recently, we just want to make sure that we're covered in the event they come back and say, hey, we've been paying fees, and you're not allowed to charge them, give them back to us, and we want to be able to say, hey, we don't have to give them back because we actually have a policy in place.
That, and just to establish them going forward, and on that point, we haven't, to our knowledge, lost a film permit based on the fees we have quoted.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
So a couple of minutes ago, the question was, what are surrounding cities in the North County corridor doing, and how do we compare? And the discussion was had about how much Carlsbad charges and how much does Oceanside charge, or Escondido charge. I think it's only fair to complete that conversation from our staff report and make note that the city of San Marcos does not charge anything. They have some instances where a conditional use permit or a special event permit is required when the filming or photographing requires supplemental law enforcement services, traffic control, and road closures. And I think the discussion that we are having is, how do we keep a track, keep track of the disruption to our community and to our residents from filming? And if, you want to call that public safety, I call it disruption, or same thing, looking at the same thing. And I think that if they're, again, if they're not disrupting anything, if they're not going to be disrupting anything, it's not their intent, their plan to disrupt anything, and I know film companies, they're on tight budgets and tight schedules, so if it's not in their intent to close this street down or take over this restaurant, they're actually probably not going to do it. You might have some bad actors out there, but for the most part, the legit production companies are running a pretty tight ship anyway. So I think that as the city, what we're looking at is, what's the disruption to the community? What's the disruption to the residents? If there is no disruption to the community and the residents, more power to you, go film your little heart out, show it everywhere, give Vista the credits, we want to see us out there. If they are disrupting the community and they're going to be closing down a street or a sidewalk or, or something, then it's going to be taking additional staff time, sheriff's time, traffic control, et cetera. So then that's where you come in with the special use permits, and I think the way San Marcos handles it is probably a model that we could use. And if we end up, like with everything else that we do, we can change it. If we start running into problems, if we... If we start running into problems, if we have a lot of bad actors that are coming to the city and just really disrupting but not, not showing us that they're here, we can deal with that at, at another time. But I just wanna reiterate, I don't see the urgency for us to do this and I, and I don't like that we're gonna have all these different, and, and, and just because we've had this and this is just formalizing what we've done, doesn't make it the right thing to do, in my book. We've been doing this, okay. Honestly, I don't mind saying, I really wasn't aware of our film industry categories and what we were charging for film industry. And I just see it, again, as I said, I see it as the city just too many categories for too many things. And if they're not disrupting the city and the community, then that's probably not something that we should be getting in the middle of. We should stay out of their way and let them, let them film. So, I'm still opposed to this. I'd, I'd like to take a lead from San Marcos and if, just do it through the use permit, which pays for the traffic, the sheriff's deputies, et cetera, when we do that type of thing. So, I'm still gonna be opposed to this. I just, I just thought we should talk about all the five cities on the corridor, not just the ones that charge money.
How much would a special use permit be?
Again, it truly depends on, on what they need. A special use permit, in some sense of the word, is the large one you hear about when we're talking about plan or zoning changes, but we also have temporary use permits for private businesses that wanna have a use of larger portion of their property or, like the, the tent sales that you see at Harbor Freight would be an example. And then, the special event permit process, again, it just depends on the dynamics of-
It has lots of different categories also.
There are, and one of, and as the city manager referenced, whether we do it through a conditional use or special use permit like Carl, San Marcos or not, it's the, the time that takes to, to coordinate the efforts of all of those varying groups who would look at it versus the over-the-counter staff review at the city manager's office. If it looks like it's gonna be a larger impact, we bring in development services or traffic engineering or the sheriff's permit, but we're still coordinating that process. And, and the proposal in front of you is just to recover the cost of that time.
Our current special use permit is $7,000, so I don't think that's, that would be the type of permit that you'd wanna charge, but-
A lot more than these.
That is what the cost is.
Okay, back to Councilmember Franklin.
I guess one of the things that just occurred to me is the fact that if we don't authorize this, now you have, the council specifically declined to authorize it, and I'm thinking your action as staff would be to strip away the, the cost structure, because you put it before us and specifically not received authority for it. So, it's kinda before us to either continue the policy that's, we're, we've got now or, or not. Is that, am I categorizing this accurately?
Correct.
The other thing that was occurring to me as I was trying to think this through is, I guess, if you're filming, you're necessarily, because my thing is, if you're not asking for exclusive use of a public asset, then why make somebody have a permit if they're not denying others? But I kinda also get the fact that if you're filming and you got a camera and people are walking in, you kinda always need exclusive use if you're doing this kinda work. And so, maybe that's the reason why this does make sense. I'm, I'm right there and I'm, I was a little ambiguous on it too, but I think, I think perhaps you've sold me on the need for it. If, if you wanna have exclusive use and enjoyment of a, of a public asset, I think it's fair to ask that the, the impact of the public be considered and, and that there's some cost to that, I understand. So, I think, you know, I'm, I'm not for regulating what doesn't need to be regulated, but this in fact does need to be regulated and it's in fact regulated in all the cities, even San Marcos, but just by a different mechanism. I mean, we could, we could regulate this simply by implementing our, you know, our, our use, we have permits for private events at parks, we have permits for closing sidewalks, we have permits for closing streets. There's already other permits that would apply to everything that they wanna do, correct?
Correct, and an example, you brought up a park, is if a family is coming for a picnic at Brangle Terrace Park, there's no permit, you enjoy your space. But if you want exclusive use of the gazebo or a certain area, then you go through a process. For example, if a photographer or a filmer was taking wedding photos in Brangle and just using the space, there's no permit required. But if they wanna take over exclusive use of parking spaces, set up equipment, impact other people's enjoyment, then we would ask for, to evaluate that use.
Yeah, that, the exclusive use angle is what gets me and why there's a compelling public interest in a, in a formal regulation. It's already regulated, it's, we're not regulating something that's unregulated. We're very much already regulating it. This is just simply giving a specific name to this particular thing we're already doing. We don't wanna withdraw the staff's authority to recover the cost of the time involved. So, with that said, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the ordinance that's been proposed by staff to formally codify the fees that we've been, as I understand, long charging film production companies.
And close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it based on that as well. My main thing is the cost recovery and of course, the exclusivity angle as well, but the biggest thing, I guess, is actually formalizing this, so I'm in support.
I'm too. I support it also and I was looking here, like, still photography, well, you know, more than, it's still photography, more than 10 cast and crew members is $50 a day, so I think it's pretty minimal to, I mean, I, I see the fees are, I don't think they're that much, but I think recovery is important of, of our staff time, so I'll support that also. So, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, seeing the moment speakers. That motion passes with one no vote. Okay, so where are we? We're done with our public? We close the public hearing? Okay. Pardon? Now, we're gonna have one more items, discussion item this evening, and it is D1, the proposed zone change, southwest corner of Hacienda Drive in La Tortuga. Deputy Mayor Aguilar asked for this to be put on the agenda, so I will ask him to introduce the items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the main reason I brought this back was, all of us up here at various times have spoken about being business friendly and making it easier for businesses or developers to go through the process. And I feel like, last time we met, we kinda did a disservice to Pacifica. But in addition to that, I found out that their deal basically fell through and that really disappointed me. So, I think this is a great project and I know we had a time crunch, but I don't think we acknowledged that and I don't think we gave them a fair chance to be heard. Now, I'm not looking to do some sort of an end-around on the, on the public process and I don't think the developer is either. I've spoken to them, they have agreed that they will go through all the notification process, putting the big sign up in front of the property, giving, they're gonna give 60 days, you know, notice and all that. Alls we were simply asked to do last time was just to accept an application, we were not approving the project. They still have to go through the approval process as far as the design review, planning commission and eventually coming back to city council, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Conley?
That's correct.
So, we're not, we're not getting, we're not doing anything here today as far as approving that project. Alls we're looking at doing is telling them that this is something that we're interested in and we think that this will be good for the community and they're just looking for faith from fellow city council members. So, that's why I brought it back, Madam Mayor. I, you know, again, I was disappointed to hear that their deal fell through with whoever's selling the property. And they're working on other projects here in the city as well and they're doing a fine job with those projects. So, I, I have confidence that this is the right development team to develop that, that particular corner. So, that's all I've got to say for now. Like to hear from staff.
Would you like a staff?
Yeah, I'd like to-
Mr. Conley?
Just to remind the public, for those people that weren't here last time, so they can hear what this project is all about and be more informed.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Conley.
I have a couple of slides here that the clerk's pulling up for me, just to give you some history here. So, this is the southwest corner of Hacienda and La Tortuga, 5.2 acre parcel. The general plan designation is currently commercial services and the zoning is commercial C1, which is a retail office zone. Pacifica Companies submitted a preliminary proposal to develop the site with self-storage and a new vehicle storage lot. That use would be consistent with the general plan, but would require the zoning to be changed to C2 in order to allow for storage. This shows the proposal and how it would lay out. The surrounding pink is C1 commercial comparable to what the site's currently zoned. The purple is a public facility associated with the courthouse and the gold is a multifamily residential designation. So, as you know, zone change requests are at the discretion of the city council. They require a formal recommendation by the planning commission, so two public hearings are required. A couple of years ago, we started a process of bringing these before you for some input on the application before we accept the application in an attempt to avoid the time spent on the application and the money spent on the application by the applicant if there is no council support. When we had that discussion earlier this month, we received direction to post the site for 60 days and schedule for city council discussion of the item after the 60-day posting and so that's the current status.
Okay, I, I actually have some speakers here. I have, and I have, the first one is Stephen Olson and he is the, representing the, the, seller of the land. So, Stephen.
I'm a co-manager of the property. I've known the Trents, who are the original buyers, they set up Breeze Hill LLC. I've known the Trents for 30 years. They're my closest friends. Bill Trent died in 2012 of a long bout with kidneys, kidney disease. A year ago, almost a year ago, in July, Sharon Trent, his widow, came to me and said, Steve, I've got some very bad news. I've been diagnosed with stage four pancreatic cancer. Thank God she is still alive. We thought she'd pass somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas. She told me at the time, what we have to do is we have to liquidate my assets. One of the assets, obviously, is this land here in Vista. She dropped the price accordingly and pretty dramatically. This land goes back to when she acquired it, or when they acquired it in 2005. It was to be a, a medical condo project. Circumstances with the economy and with the medical practices, as you well know, diminished dramatically and that project failed. A similar project in Las Vegas started earlier and was successful, but this one failed. They tried numerous different ideas trying to find a buyer. They talked to governments, but the one problem with governments is that generates no revenue for the community. When Sharon came to me, we talked and hoped with it, with the decline in pricing on the property, we could find a developer. We did not know the developer at that time, but since we've been able to cut a deal with the developer, we thought we had a deal. That fell apart and now we've tried to put it back together again. We found out these are pretty, pretty good people and we think they came up with a heck of a good idea that would generate a lot of revenue for the city and we certainly hope that you will support this project. But that is the reason that we wanted to move quickly and get this project completed and get this land sold. Thank you for your time, we hope you'll support us.
Thank you, sir. I also have a representative from the applicant here, Kari Alguaz.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Kari Alguaz, I'm the Director of Planning and Entitlements at Pacifica Companies and tonight I'm standing in for Abby Hawkins, who's at ICSC and I know she wished she could've been here tonight, but please allow me to stand in her place. I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor Aguilar for inviting us back tonight and I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the community members who were in attendance to discuss this project and we really appreciate them coming out. When we last came before the council, the directive was to post a public notice for 60 days to obtain feedback prior to a vote of whether the application would be accepted or not. We were under contract on this property and unfortunately, we had to fall out of contract because the timeline would've required us to go hard without any sense of whether the application would even be accepted. And then, if it was, we wouldn't have been able to start the application until August at the very earliest and we just couldn't move forward under those terms. The seller is very motivated to transact on this property, as you just heard, so we're currently working with them to see if we can enter back into a contract, but we would only be able to move forward with this if we could obtain direction tonight on whether the application could be accepted. So, tonight, we're respectfully requesting to get direction on whether that application can be accepted. We remain committed to a public process and a public notice process and we find that that effort can take place in the context of a formal application. And there's a lot of rules and regulations regarding the public process and comments that take place under the formal application and we're looking forward to engaging with our community members and learning more about their perspective on this project. And again, I'd like to just reiterate that tonight is not a vote on the approval of the use or the rezone itself, it's merely a decision to accept the application so that we can begin the studies and analysis that we need to do to evaluate this project. As you know, the entitlement process is a very long and iterative process, which does include a lot of public notice. There will be many opportunities for public comment and input throughout this process, so our intent is not to sidestep the community process at all, but rather to get some clarity now so that we can decide if we can make an investment in this property and proceed to analyze this site. So, with that, we had a presentation from last time, I'm happy to go through again if, if that's of interest to you. Otherwise, we really appreciate you bringing us back and considering this project again. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have four speakers, we're, all the speakers. Okay, we'll start with Roy Pearson. Oh, he left, okay. Karina Contreras, followed by Lou Slokam, followed by Darla Niren.
Hello, my name is Karina Contreras and I spoke on this issue at the last council meeting. Was pleased that, you know, the council had a 5-0 vote to allow the public to review this prior to taking the application. Now, I've been coming to council meetings for about a year and a half now and if there's one thing that has been made very clear by Vistins is that they want to engage in communication with the council when it comes to proposed developments and zone changes. Our community has the right to engage in active public participation regarding proposed changes in our neighborhoods. The council needs to adopt an open and transparent process when zone changes and developments are proposed. If the council had a willingness to listen and allow public participation, our city would be much more inclusive economically. It would be fostering community building and well-being for Vistins. So, I don't understand why a five vote, 5-0 vote is now being reconsidered. However, this is good news in one respect, because if a unanimous decision such as this could be reconsidered, then perhaps the car wash that was proposed and that was accepted off Melrose could be revisited as well. I don't think I have to stand up here for my full time and reiterate over and over and over and over again that the public wants to participate more actively with their representatives. Again, their representatives. It's unfortunate that, you know, the backstory of this property, but they're not electing you. The people of Vista are electing you. Thank you.
Lou Slokam, followed by Darla Niren, followed by Val Brown. Lucy Locum, followed by Darla Nyren, followed by Val Brown.
Members of the city council, I was not able to attend the last meeting where this issue was discussed, but feedback was that the public seemed to be pretty unanimous against this zone change. And just for some historical perspective, I live at Charlemont, and I think everyone knows about the mistake that was made with Avalon Apartments with very little public notice in the surrounding community. And the fact that our retail stores and goods and services of that little strip mall, 1631 Melrose, was terminated, and the zoning was changed to multi-use, and now apartments are going in there, and there already is no parking on the street. And now, there is a move to change the zoning to allow a pretty ugly storage unit and storage of cars. I don't know how that serves the people of Vista. I think, I hope, that all of you were in receipt of an email that I sent to each and every one of you about the fact that there are already 14 storage units in Vista. It's as many as in any other of the surrounding communities. This would be the 15th, which would be one more. I'm not so sure we need it. And as far as storage of automobiles goes, I just received today an email from my next-door application, which gives me current information about things on and about Breeze Hill of another resident's car being broken into. So with the potential of, I don't know, hundreds of cars in this particular lot, it seems to invite crime. I don't know how changing the zoning to allow such edifices to be constructed will act as a positive asset to the people in Vista and certainly in this surrounding community. And I hope that you will vote against it, because we can do better. Thank you.
Darla, followed by Val Brown.
Thank you. I spoke at last meeting, and my reasons against this project, I'm not going to repeat those. You have them emailed as well. But I did want to talk about the process, and it just seemed like the zone change is a big thing for our neighborhood and for our community, that there wasn't enough notice, that there needs to be notice. I was glad that perhaps a board was going to be put up where people could tell that something was happening. I only found out from a neighbor. I was never approached by the developer, and I live on La Tritiga. I just happened recently seeing a little piece of paper stuck up on the for-sale sign. I guess that was the notice. And I'm also thankful that the owner here is, or an advocate for the owners here, because I was dismayed last time that kind of a fictional story was made by one of the council members about the owner, that it was, you know, they're a nest egg, and whoever, they weren't here. So now we actually know who the owner is, but a whole story was made about them, and it was fictional. So I'm glad, if you make a decision, you'll make it on facts. And I think as a process, you could have those facts, and that's basically what I want to say. Also, would like to understand, if there's a zone change, what happens if this project doesn't go through? Is that like a permanent zone changer? Like how that works? And what that means for, I'll put it down to property values in my community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Val Brown.
Mayor and council, I'd also like to thank the property owner for being here tonight and the developer for their comments and their good faith that they are here. You heard my comments at the last meeting, I believe, at about 10 o'clock, about my concerns about this project. I'd like to talk about the process also. Councilmember Franklin, at the May 8 meeting, you said, "I wished on the car wash we would have put one of those development signs up for the last 18 months," and, you know, solicited feedback and put the conceptual design picture up. You also said, "I kind of feel like we should go through a process that we didn't go through on the car wash." And after discussion and your comments, Councilmember Rigby made a motion to table this item for 60 days for extensive community outreach and notification of the site. Councilmember Green seconded the motion. He said he does not think that giving the community more time to look at something is ever a bad idea. And I agree. He said, I quote, "I definitely understand the need to get as much community involvement as you can, because once we change things, there's really no way to go back." I would definitely second the motion for more community input on this. And then Councilmember Franklin, you said, "I do think there needs to be at least 60 days from today, and I think we need to have a sign up for 60 days, because only then you can know." And you advocated for a four-by-eight-foot sign with a nice color picture. And then after this discussion, there was a 5-0 vote in support of Councilmember Rigby's motion. And because of the way this item was put back on the agenda, it didn't trigger public notification for anybody in 500 feet or a sign. So I'm just kind of concerned that this isn't a very transparent process. I mean, how would the community know that a council member's bringing back an item, especially when we thought we had 60 days to give input? And I'm not really, it's kind of funny, it's a newsflash, but even though we were sure so, most people do not read the council agendas when they come out. So I was curious, too, if this process is in place for all votes, does that mean that the car wash vote could come back the same way? Because that room was packed with people in opposition, and their opposition didn't seem to matter. And, you know, I don't really blame my neighbors for becoming cynical when they heard about this being revoted on, because we have packed the council chambers on many occasions with concerns about how the community character of our neighborhood has been changed through land use decisions that have altered. So I just want to, what do you want residents to think after they invest their time, they come sit through these long meetings, they speak, and then the council changes their mind? You know, are we going to support development and profit over the people? And I know I'm not alone in these thoughts. It's top of mind for a lot of people, and I do not think that this piece of property is an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of our speakers, so Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that Deputy Mayor Aguilar is asking for a revisit on the application, and that we'll go through a process, but the comment was made, and I think you made the comment about the application process would show some support in the community for this project. And I think that's the sticking point, because we're not there yet. There is not a lot of support for this project that has come out. We haven't heard from a lot of those people. We've heard from a lot of the people on the other end of the spectrum who are not in favor of this. So I appreciate that you want to start the process, but my question is for you. Well, first of all, you see, I have my general plan here with me, and I want to talk about Lucy, the land use and community identity element. And Lucy Policy 11.1 states, "Encourage community participation in planning and development of land use policies, plans, and programs through outreach efforts, workshops, community meetings, public hearings, newsletters, and electronic media." Lucy Policy 11.3 goes on to state, "Provide and support opportunities for diverse groups to participate in the planning process." And I think that's what we were asking for last meeting when we said, "Pause on this and put it out there to the community." We have had way too many instances in Vista over the last few years where our community feels like they have not been given enough notification or enough opportunities to present their position, yea or nay, either way, to the city or to the city council. And it is imperative, it is absolutely paramount, that as a city council, that we hear our constituents, that we hear our citizens and residents here. And yes, I am a pro-business person, and I do believe in individual property rights, but I represent the people of Vista who are here now. I don't represent the people of Vista who are not here right now. And some people don't see a distinction in that, but I do, because as a council member, what I have tried to do is to work with my community, to listen to my community. It is a balance between what some of the people want and what businesses have a right or property owners have a right to do. We don't always get it right, but we really need to try to get it right. And my first obligation is to the people of the city of Vista, not to developers who want to come in and develop something. And yes, there are property rights, but there's a reason they're coming here and asking permission is because they're asking for a change in our zoning requirements. So that does open the door for us to have a discussion on whether or not we're going to approve a zone change for this or not. So it is so important that we go through this whole process, that the people have these workshops at times and days that they can be there with notification, that they know that they can be there, et cetera. I'm still not in favor of the application at this point, especially if the application purpose at this point is to get a tacit approval of the project so that you can move forward with certain things. Again, we're not at that point yet. So I still stand by my original motion, which was a 5-0 vote, to hold off on this until we have these 60 days and we do this public outreach and we do it right. And I think if we, sometimes we need to look at what we do as a council and how does it reflect on us as a city council and how does it reflect on us as a city? What are the constituents thinking? What are they seeing when we do things like this? So I still say, go for the 60 days, and 60 days started tolling at that last meeting on, I think it was May the 8th. So we're already in our 60-day process. So those are my comments for now, but I could be back. We'll see.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've seen basically three people that are from the surrounding community. I know there's probably others who had to leave or what have you, but I think the most important thing is, we're not trying to skirt the notification issue, the transparency, as people have said tonight. We're still going to have the 60-day notification. We're still going to put the signs up. We're going to put it on the website. You have all the opportunity to put it on Facebook and say whatever you'd like to say about our council members if you want to continue to do that. But the point is, we're going to get the word out. Alls we're really looking to do is give the community time to weigh in on this, and we're not going to eliminate that. We're just trying to make sure that this project doesn't go away. I think it's a good project. It's a low-impact project for the community. The same people that are here this evening, concerned about parking and traffic and all those things that we heard about on Avalon and Breeze Hill, it's, those are apartments. Those are, you know, I mean, I still feel those are good projects, but a project like this is nothing like that. We're talking about probably 10 times less the traffic because of this. I think one of the numbers was two and a half, what is it, trips? Two and a half trips a day, something like that? Is that the right number, Mr. Conley? Or is it, it's going to be more than that?
It's, I don't think it's that low, but yeah, it's much lower than residential.
Much lower than residential, much lower than commercial. I mean, it's just to me, you know, and I did like the park idea, I understand, and, you know, the developer listened to the community, and I appreciate you listening to the community on that, you know, but they were obviously making an effort to make this an attractive project. And if you look at the building, it's a beautiful building, actually. I mean, no one would know that it's storage. It's a, it looks like a modern, commercial building there. So anyhow, again, we're not voting to approve this project this evening. We're just accepting an application. They still have to go through the same process that the, you know, any other business has to go through, such as the car wash, Breeze Hill, Avalon, all these projects had to go through. And we're going to, you know, we've heard loud and clear from our constituents that we want some communication, and I think that's what we're doing. In fact, there's somebody here that wasn't able to make it last time. This gave them an opportunity to be here for two items on here. So, I mean, every time we talk about it, we're given more opportunity for the community to put their input in. So I'll still be supporting it.
Just before I move, I just want to add one thing. If we don't accept the project or accept the application tonight, you don't need 60 days or 90 days, so the project will be gone. So then, so either you accept the application or you say no, and then you kill the project. That's what it sounds like to me right now, because it's already, they're already gone. They aren't actually back in escrow again yet, because the money will become hard, which means they, it's, right now, they can get their money back if it doesn't pass, but the money will become, they'll, you know, non-refundable at that point. So anyway, so it looks like to me, that's, so I'll let you talk about that for a little bit. Councilmember Green.
Real quick, in regards to the cancellation and contingency removals and whatnot, I feel as if the developer had to cancel because the contingency period was up, and since they didn't have a solid answer, they had to cancel so that their deposit did not become non-refundable. If we have a seller who wants to sell this property and a buyer who wants to buy this property, they can re-enter into a new contract with a new contingency period if they both want to work together to buy or sell. So I don't want to say that we're going to lose the project altogether. If it's really a beneficial project for Pacifica, and it's really a property that the seller wants to sell, they should be able to structure a new contract with a timeframe in there that gives the community time to do their due diligence before any money of the buyers becomes non-refundable again. There's always extensions and ratifications and amendments to purchase agreements. Apparently, we couldn't amend this or file an addendum to this purchase agreement, so perhaps a new agreement may have to be made if you guys both want to buy and sell the contract. Now, you said we're not doing anything tonight, but in the same breath, you also said what we're doing is we're accepting an application. We're not actually changing zoning, but what we are saying is that we're interested in this development, and we think this development is good for Vista. I'm not interested in this development if my community's not interested in this development. And as far as good for Vista, 14 storage units while only having nine Starbucks, which I get complaints about how many Starbucks we have, makes it seem to me like there's not a huge need for this particular type of business. However, what I'm saying is that if we put it out to the community for 60 days, and I don't have more than three people show up, that I'll say, "Hey, I gave the community time. There is no restaurant that wants to go in there. There is no retail use that wants to go in there." And I think that's what the community is saying, is, "Hey, we can do better than storage. We want a place we can walk from our condo and go use, go eat, go shop, whatever." Obviously, as the property seller said, nobody's been beaten down their door for that type of establishment. But also, perhaps they weren't looking because they thought this was a done deal. So maybe over the 60-day period that we all voted 5-0 to give the community, we'll be able to look, is there another use? Is there a better use? 60 days is not that long of a time. It passes by at a blink of an eye. We're actually dark the entire month of July and won't be opening back up until August anyways. And I would recommend the 60-day period doesn't start on May 8th, because there's no sign on May 8th. I want to get the 60-day period starting once the notice has been given to the community. That way, it's a real 60 days, because we're already, you know, 14 days into the 60 days and nothing's happened other than we're trying to change our mind on what we previously decided. So I agree with Councilwoman Rigby. I made a decision. I think it's what's best for the community. I only get one opportunity to make sure that I provide the right land use. They're asking for us to change it, because what they want to put there doesn't fall in line with our plan, that the city council before me voted on and made it, and it's my job to uphold that plan and make sure that I work for the citizens who are going to elect me. So my feeling is on that I'm going to honor the same 60 days, and I would like the 60 days to actually start at the end of this meeting if that's the route we decided to go, majority-wise. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Joe pretty much said everything I was going to say, and I'm fine with the 60-days tolling beginning after this meeting.
Councilmember Franklin.
Councilmember Franklin.
At great peril to satisfy my morbid curiosity, I would like to know why that the buyer and seller did not have a desire to amend the purchase agreement. I assumed that the developer wanted to move their capital onto a different project and move their staff time onto a different project. Is that why you didn't want to wait? Because certainly, you've got a very motivated seller, you've got a, you've got a project here, so what was the reason that, I want, just want to understand, because it's pertinent to our reconsideration.
Yeah, thank you for asking. It's a very good question. As I've been told the answer to that by my partners who are working on this deal is that exact fact, that we would rather just move on to another project if that's the case.
Yeah, okay. That makes, that makes sense, and I apologize that I didn't consider that, but it's a fair point of view. You're, you know, as a business, you know, you've got time and capital, and you can apply that time and capital to another project, and I'm sure you have other development opportunities, and I get it. But also, you said very clearly tonight, and the reason that I wanted to hold off at the last meeting was because, you know, we were asked by the development community to be more business-friendly and to engage in these design reviews, which really, is it, are we calling this a design review? Because, because we don't need to vote to accept an application, correct, Mr. Conley?
That's correct.
Anybody can, anybody can apply for whatever they'd like to apply for. This is a question of whether we are, you know, inviting the application or not, correct?
This is to benefit the applicant and the community process.
But it's, this is the design review. This is to say upfront whether or not the things that are strictly within our caprices are, whether we want to move forward on that, on that element alone, right? Okay, so in certain, in certain situations, it's just, it's up to us, what do we, what do we think? But what I heard the developer say is that Pacifica, as a company, is willing to make an application and they're willing to go through the formal process. You've obviously seen what the council's pleasure is, you know, it, there's some very divided, you know, direction up here. But if you're willing, if you're intrepid enough to offer an application under these terms, then I certainly would invite you to go through the process. And that being said, Mr. Conley, roughly, how long does this process go? When do we think we'll finally get to the first event? Will we see two or three discussion and public hearings on the zone change? How many times does that have to come before us?
You'll have, there will be two public hearings. It will come to council one time at the end of that process. It goes to the planning commission first.
Public hearings, and approximately how many days from today would you say we'll be at the first of those public hearings?
About nine months.
Okay, nine months. Okay. Listen, the 60 days was not to benefit the residents. Flatly, it was not to benefit the residents. It was to benefit the developer, because I wanted the developer to have the benefit of understanding what our pleasure was at the outset. That's why we engage in this design review. Way at the outset, before the developer gets all their money and time invested, we said to the development community, we'll take a look upfront as the preference makers, policymakers, but it's just about preference of the community, and we'll give you, we'll allow you to gauge our interest at the outset. This is a smart idea, because business people don't want to invest a quarter million dollars in a project only to find out that we never liked it to begin with. So where we're at right now is we have a developer that says, I get it, you're mixed, you're not really of one-like mind on this, I don't have a clear consensus, but we're willing to press forward and we're willing to go make our case to the neighborhood and we're willing to go through a nine-month process with two public hearings ahead of us. So that being said, this developer's not asking for a promise at this point of approval. They're asking to go through the process and have nine months, so I don't think, we're not getting 60 days, we're getting nine months. And if you're, if Pacifica's willing to move forward knowing that, then I would go back to some of the things that I said during the, you know, what is it, one or two weeks, two weeks ago, which is that, you know, in 15 years of the city's engagement in trying to actively market the property, we have not found a use. We're at 20%, you know, vacancy right now in office property, which is how this is currently zoned. It's not very enticing for people to build office properties, to come in and build office properties when we're at 20% vacancy. The market is clearly responding to a lack of, of demand for that product. And that said, I think if we were sitting here tonight with a proposal for any of the many things that are properly entitled for that property, I think the neighborhood would be packing this room tonight, because there's a lot of uses that would really disturb the neighborhood that are already properly entitled. And so I think this use, I agree, the renderings are actually attractive, and I agree with the fact that the lack of traffic in and out of this project, if I were a neighbor of the project directly, I mean, if my property, if I had to drive by it on a daily basis, would I rather have something there that generates a large trip traffic, or would I rather have something there that generates a low trip traffic? I'd probably prefer something that generates a low trip traffic. So that being said, the developer not asking for a, an end run of the formal process, but simply to begin a long nine-month process of formal consideration? Yeah, I would be in favor of beginning a nine-month process of formal consideration.
Councilmember Green.
I'm good.
Okay, the only thing I would say is with the nine-month process, I look at the, it's a tough piece to develop, that is, and I look at who would, who would put it, right now, strip centers don't do well, especially across from the jail, which is where the detention center, which is right there. And so I don't see, there's no exposure to the freeway exposure, there's no exposure anywhere that people would know if there was something there. The only people who might know it is the neighborhood up above, but, but, you know, they couldn't support like a shopping center or they couldn't, a restaurant. Who's going to put a restaurant in when they have, you know, prisoners let out of jail there? I mean, it's just, it's not a good, it's a bad place just to develop, and I, there aren't many things that'll go in there. And this is a low-traffic, you know, and the traffic that comes in and out of there is going to come off, probably off hacienda. So I, you know, I just, I think it's a good project, but I'm willing to go nine months and listen to the people in the neighborhood and, and, you know, maybe when they see the building and maybe when they have some meetings with them, they'll, they'll, you know, come to that conclusion. But they can make that decision as we go along, so I'm willing to support that also. So.
Madam Mayor, I have another question for Mr. Conley, if I may.
Sure.
You were asked about the meetings, and you said there would be two public hearings, and I'm assuming public hearings would be at council meetings.
No, that's one public hearing at the planning commission for a formal recommendation and one public hearing at the council for final consideration.
And then it would be incumbent upon the applicant for further community outreach, town hall meetings, something that's not on 5:30 at a Tuesday night? Because if we're going to get community outreach, that's one of the biggest complaints that we get, is that people can't get here to council meetings or planning commission meetings. And I want to hear from the community, and I want them to have an opportunity to come out and talk about this. And I know that it's been said, we only have three people in the room, but other letters and calls that we've gotten are from organizations that represent a lot more voices than just the three that are in the room. So the voice is out there, and I want it to be heard by everybody. So I would want to have meetings, community meetings, at times where the community can actually show up. And I would want to have a guarantee or a promise from, from staff and from the developer that that would be done.
So typically, that process is handled by the developer. It's not something that the city facilitates or requires. We certainly recommend that our applicants do reach out to the community and hold meetings. I know that they've initiated that process one time. They should, certainly should do it more. If you want the city staff to facilitate those types of meetings, that becomes extremely difficult, because we have a number of applications and it would take a significant amount of time to prepare reports and bring all of those projects before you for discussion, before we schedule public hearings at the planning commission and the council. We can do that for this project if you'd like, but in terms of future applications in total, that's a significant ask.
I understand. I think it should be for all projects, but I understand what you're saying. And I know that it was commented that there had been a previous community meeting, but that actually isn't really what happened. It was somebody from the developer office went to an existing community meeting and spoke for a few minutes. So that was not an actual community meeting where people were notified to come out and have this discussion. So we just need to make sure that if we're going to do this process, that it has to be available to the community to come. So I don't know how we're going to marry that up, how we're going to work that out, but can you work with the developer to see that that gets done, or, not just timely, but that there are a couple of meetings that are accessible to the community?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, Madam Mayor, that I definitely understand where Councilwoman Rigby's coming from. I'd just like to say that I think it's in the developer's best interest to do that reach out. I think that's going to be, end horribly for them if they don't. I think they understand that. They've communicated that to me, and I've communicated that to them as well, that, you know, we can't make a half-effort. They want this project to work for them. They're going to do, you know, their best to obviously sell this project to the community and, and sell the benefits of the project to that community. And, you know, others will, will have, it's going to get out there. The word's going to get out there. They know they have their work cut out for them, but they're willing to do that, so I don't think we're going to have that problem.
And hopefully, they'll put the sign up, you know, rather than us putting the sign up, I would think that the developer would put the sign up with a picture of what's going to go on there. I would think.
We can certainly require them to put the sign up, and we can make sure that they facilitate at least a couple of community meetings before we come forward with any public hearings.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Franklin.
Before we dispense with this issue, I just want to say that having been on this council for three and a half years now, we do have, and I've seen it grow, you've got a council in this city that is very desirous of public input. We have gone to greater and greater measures consistently throughout the three and a half years I've been on this council to achieve communication with the public. We have implemented new means of communication through social media. We have become more active. We have tended toward more communication with the public. We have instituted this process where instead of hearing formally in front of the council about something when it's the 11th hour and all the decisions have already been made behind the scenes, instead, we bring it to you at the beginning now. And so I'm not going to allow the narrative to exist that this is a council that has not worked tremendously to achieve public input at the outset, because we have. And we deserve, as a city and as a council, we deserve to be recognized for the fact that we have worked to improve our processes and we care genuinely about hearing from the community. All of us do. I've seen that from each of my colleagues on the council individually, although at times we have greatly differing styles. We all really want to hear from people, and we care what the community has to say. And we haven't, you know, our, the changes we've made have, have spent more time, not less, have tended towards more communication, not less. And we've got to keep going that way, because ultimately, what we want is, we do want consensus-driven decision-making in our city. We don't want, we don't want to do things without engaging the community. So I just had to, I had to make that point, because to allow the narrative that we're not inclusive, that we don't work to achieve public input and to find out what the community wants is untrue. So I needed to say that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to move to accept the application.
Take a second. Okay. Any other, if, any other discussion? Okay, see any other discussion, please cash your votes. That motion passes 3 to 2. Okay, so do we have any oral communications? Okay, I have, the next thing on our agenda is our oral communications. I have two speakers, Joshua, Josh Oteyende, followed by Thelma Mubaiwa.
I'm just going to talk about trash today. Well, seriously, I got to talk about trash. Last, last Sunday, you guys had Losers, Don't Lit, over there at hacienda, and I wasn't be able, I wasn't able to be there because I had a church event, but I would, would have liked to have been there. Also, I'm looking forward to the EDCO tour facility on this, this Saturday. And talking about trash, there, I noticed on my way over here that there's, there's a pretty large litter, litter bags of trash right where the security auto, Chevrolet or security automotive was. I don't have, it pains me to, I haven't downloaded Vista Access, but I just wanted to point it out that if, if, if the, if it's on the owner or landowner to, to remove the trash or the public works, well, how does that work? I just wanted to point that out, that, that, I mean, it looks like somebody took their whole trash dump and put it on the parking lot. That's how it looks, so it's, that I saw. So that's all I wanted to say.
Deputy Mayor wants to say something to you.
Thank you, Joshua, for being here and sitting through all this and making that report. I actually did report that on the Access Vista app a couple of days ago. I got confirmation that it was accepted, so that should, I think it's because it's private property, they have to notify the owner, but appreciate you pointing it out. It should get cleaned up in a few days, though.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mubaiwa? Is that right?
You hit it right on the money. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Thelma Mubaiwa, and I'm with the District Attorney's Office. I am the new Crime Prevention Specialist. And I'm coming from the CARE Community Center, and CARE stands for Community Action Resource and Engagement. And we are located in a national city. I just wanted to read off to you the mission and the vision and the objective of the CARE Center. So the vision is meeting the community's needs to achieve full equity, and the mission is building community partnerships to link resources by using a holistic, evidence-based approach to improve the well-being of all. The objective is to provide intervention and prevention services for the community and the community. And we offer service referrals based on need, which may include substance abuse treatment and counseling, housing assistance, mental health services, vocational training, veteran services, and more. As a crime prevention specialist, my main focus will be to learn the community. We're mostly in the South County. My focus will be here in the North County primarily, Escondido, Oceanside, and Vista. And I'm just here to learn the community, uncover what the needs of the community are and how they relate to crime, and seeing what we can do to help. So I'll most, more than likely, I'll be sitting on community roundtables, collaboratives, and coalitions here in the North County, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on here, those are the oral communications, and so I'm going to go to remarks. I guess I will start with Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you guys all for staying the entire time. It was a great meeting tonight, and thank you for all my fellow council members for all of your good feedback. Trash is a hot topic. Thank you so much, Mr. Oteyende, for talking about it. This Saturday, from 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock, at the Escondido disposal, EDCO transfer si- This Saturday, from 1:00 to 4:00, at the Escondido Disposal Edco Transfer Station in Escondido, located at 1021 South Mission Road, Escondido, California, 92025, we will be meeting there at 1:00 to take a tour of what happens to your trash when it leaves your house on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever day that is. And we'll actually get to watch the green machine, which is not me. It is a big green machine that digitally and optically, in a lot of other ways, sorts our trash and recycles. Last meeting, our meeting went really late and we didn't have any closing comments because we were here till about 11:30. I missed the previous council meeting because I was in Las Vegas at the 50th Annual Waste Expo. I am the vice chair of the Regional Solid Waste Association, which is responsible for negotiating trash rates in your community and also household hazardous waste. And one of our big pushes right now, as a trash community, and also as a country, is organic waste recycling. Edco, something we're going to see on the weekend, is how they can transfer our organic waste into renewable natural gas and how they power their entire fleet. When I was at this conference, I attended a lot of workshops, but one of the best workshops that I attended that I thought was pretty innovative was a chef boot camp. And how do you use the whole part of the fruit, the whole part of the vegetable, without wasting things? I was astonished to find out that the port of Philadelphia every year has, and I wrote this down because it was such a big number, eight million pounds of rejected produce per year. And not just because it's bad, one whole batch that came in was rejected because the carrots were too long. And that's still edible food. And we have a lot of communities that can use that food. We can also reuse that for different types of energy and fuels and things. So, a lot going on in the trash industry. If anybody in the community has any questions, I am all on top of trash regulations, assembly bills, senate bills, you name it, I'm your trash guy. So, thank you so much, Vista, for putting me in this position. Thank you for being here tonight. Thanks again for a great meeting.
Councilmember Franklin. Councilmember Rigby.
No, I don't think I can talk that. But I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight to speak to us, to let us know what your thoughts and opinions are for the future of our city. And for those of you who are still here, thank you for being here and persevering. And most of all, thank you to staff. And I understand that sometimes it is a big ask from us or from me. And I appreciate that you're here and I appreciate all that you do for us. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Yes, so I just would like to, I guess, send a shout out to the Only Losers Litter campaign. They go out once a month and pick up trash in various parts of our city. I joined them on Sunday. They're going to have another one, I believe, January 20th.
No, January, June.
I'm sorry, June. Check their website, Only Losers Litter. You know, I'm not that savvy when it comes to Facebook and that, but anyways, they have a website. But go out and help them, they're doing good things. And you're right, it's just incredible what people will throw out their window of their car, whatever they're doing. And it's just a shame. This is our community, we should do what we can to make it look beautiful. I would like to make a quick report on NCTD. We had a recent update on our PTC, which is the Positive Train Control. That's something, a standard is being set throughout the country for all railroads. And I'm happy to report, and I think I might have said this earlier in a previous meeting, that North County Transit District is 100% ready to go, be certified, I should say, for PTC. Unfortunately, some of our other tenants on our railroad are not ready, namely Amtrak, which is the federal government that's actually requiring PTC. So, until they get certified, along with BNSF and others, we will not be 100% certified. But we are one of 10 throughout the country that are waiting to be certified by the federal In addition to that, we had a safety and security update, which spoke about crime. Crime is actually up. And the reason is, we have hired more sheriff, we've contracted with OPD, also Escondido, and we feel that actually the sheriff, Escondido Police and Oceanside Police are actually making more busts. And that's the reason why the crime stats are higher right now. We have a feeling that that is actually going to go down. So they're catching a lot more bad guys, is basically it. We, complaints, though, about safety, or the feeling of not being safe on our Sprinter and buses, have gone down tremendously. So we know that this is actually starting to work. So it's not unusual when you step up, regulations, that you're going to see the numbers go up temporarily. And, but the one sad report that we had is the number of fatalities on our railroad. Over the last five years, we've had 15 and a half accidents per year, with nine and a half fatalities per year.
How do you have a half a fatality?
Well, that's just the average. Yeah, average, sorry. Over the last three years, though, we've had 63 incidents. Thirty-six were fatal and 27 were non-fatal. So actually, the numbers are going up in the last few years. It's very unfortunate, we've been trying to get the word out, but that doesn't seem to help. So we are taking steps in trying to make our railroad safer by creating barriers. Unfortunately, some of our neighboring cities on the coast are not always supportive of that. So, that's it.
Okay, I have some things here. One other thing from Sandeg that's kind of interesting is they, the state just gave us our, for Sandigo County, our regional, we call it the RINA numbers, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And they decided that we are, the state has decided that Sandigo County is 170,000 homes short. And so we haven't received what our numbers will be for Vista, that they'll require us to put in, we have to have zoning for. But that will be coming in the next, maybe, Friday, it may come on Friday, but it'll be interesting to see what they require. And the way they get the numbers, they take not only, you know, people that don't have houses, but people are doubled up in houses, they count, you know, like if there's two families, they count all of that. And so it's kind of an interesting thing. I'll let you know when we get the final numbers. But I was with the mayor's meeting and one of the mayors, or a couple of them are saying that they don't have the land anymore to build, so they're going to have to put the zoning for multifamily housing onto a shopping center that maybe one day will be tore down and put the numbers there. Because you have, what they tell you is you have to have the zoning for those numbers that they give you. You have to zone. Or the state will be taking over and just putting multifamily housing where you don't want it. And they'll have density bonuses and no parking restrictions. So it's going to be an interesting conversation that's coming up. So, on to this, the Memorial Day is going to be full of activity here in Vista, that's exciting, exciting weekend. The Wave Water Park opens for the summer season on Saturday. Ticket information is online at thewawaterpark.com. On Sunday, we're going to have the Chambers Annual Strawberry Festival downtown all day. So stop and visit the city booth. I'm going to work in the city booth for a while, in front of the Alvo Playhouse on Main Street. Festival information is online at vistas strawberryfest.com if you want information about what's going on during the day, the different, they have a lot of contests going on this. They have the run in the morning and then they have a lot of contests going on. I think there's also talent contests and all sorts of things going on, and strawberry-eating contests and all of that. The American Legion Post 365 will be holding Memorial Day Remembrance at the Civic Center on the parking lot down here on Memorial Day, May 28th, from 10:00 until 11:00. So I'd like to see a lot of people there for the Memorial Day, just to remember the veterans and those who are no longer with us. Also on Saturday, there will be a free oil filter recycling exchange event at O'Reilly Auto Parts, located at 1250 South Santa Fe Avenue. You can drop off your used oil filter and exchange it for a new one from 10 to 2:00. And information is online at that at wastefreesd.org. Wastefreesd.org. And lastly, the city has an opening on its Community Development Block, Grant Citizens' Advisory Committee and Community Safety Commission. So residents can obtain an application at cityofvista.com or at the City Clerk's Office on the second floor. And we need submissions by the end of May, May 29th. So we can use some applications for people for those committees. And with that, I will turn it over to our city manager and see what he's got.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know that city offices on Memorial Day, along with the library, will be closed. And so trash pickup will be delayed one day that week. And then we will be having a special city council meeting on Tuesday, May 29th. We knew this meeting might have the opportunity to go a little late. And so what we wanted to do is give you adequate time to go through the operating budget, as well as have a discussion on marijuana initiatives in the city. So we're bringing that back to you on May 29th. The mayor mentioned the city will have a booth in front of the Alvo at the Strawberry Festival. You are all included to stop by or stay and work and greet the residents. So that'd be great. And last, I normally don't tell you about what I do on the weekend, but this last weekend, I went to the Moonlight on Friday night. It was Moonlight Presents. And it was classic albums live and they did Abbey Road. And we had over 1,000, maybe 1,100 people at the Moonlight for that event. And the next night was Led Zeppelin. So it just goes to show that not only the summer musicals are happening at the Moonlight, but the Moonlight Presents series is doing well. And that's thanks to Dr. Bronner's, who is our largest sponsor. Thank you.
Wonderful. Does the city attorney have any announcements tonight?
Why, yes, I do.
Oh, my goodness.
I would like to celebrate the city attorney's word of the day, which is zero, as in zero illegal medical marijuana stores in the city of Vista, at least until tomorrow morning.
Yeah. How about our city clerk down there? Claire, nothing tonight? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.